Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 27th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 9:30. Councillors, you have the agenda in front of you. Just like to ask if there's any additions to the agenda today? Mayor Allen.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I understand that Mr. Wilson is here and wishes to speak as a delegation of one on its own behalf. To invite him by.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll have Agenda Item 51 added. Mr. Wilson to address council. Any other additions to the agenda? Could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Counselor Paul, thank you. All in favor? You're not opposed. The motion carries and we have our agenda for the day. We're moving on to item four. We have the Committee of the Whole Minutes in front of us from February 13th. They were approved February 20th and the item here is business arriving for the minutes. So if there is any business rising, the... Sorry, Mr. Given?
Yeah, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. Director Nadon is here on Zoom. She just wanted to point out an irregularity in the minutes. They have been previously approved, as you said, but administration had an observation that we just wanted to share, make note up to council.
Please go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, good morning, everyone. I'm a bit sick today, so I thought I'd keep it to myself and zoom in. I would just like to point out that in the minutes for the February 13th meeting, there was an error in how we numbered the motions. So the numbers that you see in the current agenda package are correct. So beginning with approval of the agenda, that was motion 50-24. And those minutes were approved at the last regular meeting and because we had a special meeting in between is where the error occurred in numbering those motions. So it was previously numbered as number 38. So we do look at this as a housekeeping item in terms of it doesn't change the motion, it doesn't change the effect of council's decisions for that meeting. So we simply just fixed the error. Having that said, if council would like to approve those minutes again, we could come back at the next regular and bring them up for approval. But it has been fixed. The numbers are correct in your current agenda package. We just wanted to be upfront about the error. So if you were comparing the documents, you didn't wonder what happened there. So no action required from my perspective. But if you would like to reaffirm those minutes, we could do that at the next regular. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Then I'll just look to council if anybody would like to reaffirm those minutes. Please make a note or we'll just all accept it. They've been modified and... Well, good. Councillors? We'll move on then. We're moving on to Agenda Item 5, Delegations. And yes, we have Jeff Wilson here. Please come on up and grab a mic.
Thank you.
Heard them calling Detective Wilson, you know?
Yes, that's right. Yes. Thanks you. Thank you, council for hearing me. I come with respect to item 7.5 on the agenda. The Transit Fleet Facility Procurement. And I understand that at this meeting, you will be discussing that and no decisions will be made. That's my understanding. It's all unofficial. But I would like to lend my voice of support for the expansion of our transit because we, well, we need transitable and we may not need it at this point, but in the future, we definitely will. The province is they want to increase the, I guess it would be revenue from tourism. They want to expand it from $10 billion a year to $30 billion a year in six years. And that means that there are going to be a lot more people coming to Banff, Jasper, Edmonton and Calgary. So we are, in short order, we are going to be very, very busy. And if you look at the state of Utah, several years ago, they went this route as well. And they initiated an extensive marketing campaign to the rest of the world to draw people to Utah. It was very successful. And now, when you go to Utah, when you go to the national parks there, you cannot move. In June, July, August and September, it is gridlock. In places like Zion, you cannot, you have to take a bus to go to places like Angel Landing and the Artist Walk and things like that. In Yellowstone, it is, you don't go there. Well, I don't anyway. And it is just way too busy. And that's probably by 2030, that's where we are going to be. And we're the transit system that we have, because it's in its infancy, there are no numbers really to support any kind of expansion. And that's to be expected because it's an infant program. But if you look to the future, we definitely will need it. And anytime, my understanding is that the federal government will help to aid for this. Anytime you can buy it or get an $8 million asset for $800,000, that to me is a bargain. And you got to jump on that because if you, if you're playing catch-up three years down the road, when we have gridlock in town, nobody can move anywhere. You'll never get it for that kind of price again. And you're always behind the eight ball. And I really approve the council's forward thinking in this regard because you have to look to the future, what's going to happen five, six, seven, 10 years down the road. Most politicians don't look beyond the next the next election. And it's a credit to council that you are looking further on down the road. So me, as a taxpayer and a senior, I support this 100%. And I may not live to see the furthest ramifications of this decision, which is 15 years down the road when we're trying to move people around. You've got no place to park. It's already that way when you go to places like Pyramid or Annette or Moline Canyon, which is why Parks Canada would like the municipality to add a Moline Canyon loop because they've got no place to put their cars. So anyway, as a taxpayer, I wanted to support or let you know of my support for the the Transit Fleet Facility procurement. And that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Wilson. And just really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to address council. We always welcome it, although we don't often see it. So really appreciate you being here. I just quickly open up the table to councillors. If they had any questions for you or comments and then we'll move on. But thank you for being here. Councillors?
I got something to speak to and I appreciate you coming forward and really like having you here. See. You know, over the weekend, when I was looking at our our climate resilience capacity building program, I just kind of went off on a tangent because I was thinking about all these things. And I decided to look at world automobile production, for example, because we've been looking at finding ways to get around or mitigating people using their vehicles because we're getting more people traveling, two people per car, that type of thing. And it's interesting, the mean temperature increase over years correlates with world automobile production. And I know that, you know, that isn't the thing that's causing it, but it's an indicator of what's happening in the world with population and industry growth and stuff like that. So when you hit 1982 after the recession, you see this big spike in both the temperatures and world automobile productions. And then again, right after 2008 particularly, with Chinese auto production and the temperatures go up at the like incline almost at the same rate. So just an interesting observation. I think it's good timing that we're talking about this and, you know, and the insight and support of moving forward on these types of initiatives. I know a lot of this revolves around electric buses. And, you know, I'm looking forward to some of the discussions we're going to have on both of these and all of these topics today. So good time. Thank you.
Okay. And also one other thing I'd like to say too, if one way that parks could assist in encouraging ridership is they could go the route that the provincial, the first Columbia provincial government did with their provincial parks. They didn't have a fee for parking, but what they said was you had to have a permit to go and park it. Naren Falls, to go to Cypress. There were lineups there that were like 10 miles long to get up the hill to go to Cypress. If parks made it so that you had to have a permit to go and park at Pyramid Lake or to park Lake Annette. And one way to circumvent the permit process is to ride the bus. And so what they do is people get on the bus. They make it cheap. They don't take their car. But they ride the bus and it's a permit system, so it doesn't add an extra cost, but it's just a level of of control, who goes where. And it encourages people to use the alternative, which will be your bus system. And with electric buses too, I know there is, there's been a lot of chatter recently online about this specific initiative and what Edmonton has gone through with their electric buses and how they've been less than stellar in their performance. But this technology is in its infancy. There will be bugs to work out. And this is part of the transition process that we're making. Every, you know, you don't need a transit system in Jasper really to get from one side to the other. You can walk anywhere in town for 30 minutes. But this transit system is to move people out from, you know, we get, we have a community of 5,000 that is supporting an infrastructure to support 35,000 or 40,000 people. It's illogical. It makes no, it makes no monetary sense at all. So you got to get these people out to places where there is congestion and there is a problem with parking. And that's one way to do it is is up at Pyramid Lake, all these popular places. It'd be great if they could run a loop that would go down to the basket falls. And you stop at Valley of the Five. You stop at Horseshoe Lake. Horseshoe Lake is a nightmare. And you can stop at Wobassel on the way back. It'd be great. I know parks would love it if the transit system would run up to Cavell, but that's not going to happen. That's a whole other can of worms. But sorry, sorry, I didn't mean that. But yeah, I'm a firm believer in public transit. Keep the cars off the road. Have one bus instead of 20. So anyway, that's my rant for today. Thank you.
Excellent. We appreciate it. Councillors? Mayor Allen?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just wanted to add my appreciation for you taking the time to come here and express with a, with a high degree of passion, your values. It's not often that we get supportive voices in our council chamber. Quite often, it's the other side, the other perspective that takes precedent. So either directly or indirectly, more often indirectly. So I really do appreciate you coming and expressing the values that we hold and happy to know that we align with your values and I'm sure they're shared by many others. Thank you for taking time to come here today. Thank you.
Bill Conescut, you're in the audience and just give you the opportunity to come and speak if you'd like. But thank you for joining us today. Okay, we're moving on to item six on the agenda is correspondence. I don't believe there is any. It's given your boat to speak there? No? Okay. Sorry. I saw you reaching for your mic. So we're moving on to Agenda Item 7, New Business. First item on here is 7.1 Climate Resilience Capacity Building Program. And we do have representatives of the Resilience Institute, Henry Penn and Laura Linds on Zoom, I think. Mr. Given, you want to open this one up?
Absolutely. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. You saw me flinching in preparation there. It's great to be able to welcome Laura and Henry here. Council will remember that in February of 2023, the municipality received $8,000 from the Municipal Climate Change Action Centre to move forward with a climate resiliency, excuse me, capacity building project. And in March of that year, council approved the selection of the Resiliency Institute as the lead contractor with the support of Associated Engineering in developing a climate risk assessment report. You've heard previously from Laura and Harry. And so I'm going to actually turn it over to them as they provide a brief overview of the report. Council has the full detailed report linked to the agenda package. But I'll turn it over to our team from the Resiliency Institute to provide the high level overview for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. And good morning, everyone. Thank you, councillors and Deputy Mayor Wilson for this, this privilege and this opportunity to come to you again and to present some of the key findings, some of the outcomes and a few of the next steps that are contained in our report from the recently completed Climate Risk Assessment for the municipality of Jasper. Before I start, before I get into the report, I would just like to thank and to acknowledge the leadership at the municipality of Jasper for the opportunity to partner with the municipality on this important next step towards climate resilience. I'd also like to thank everybody from the community who came out and spoke to us during the course of the project. I got to spend a couple of days in Jasper and it was really nice to meet everybody that came to talk to us about their thoughts and their suggestions, their ideas on climate change and climate change hazards for the municipality. And I'd also like to acknowledge the government of Alberta and the funding that we receive for this project through the MCCAC. And that this project was completed in partnership with the Prairie Adaptation Research Collaborative Park and Associated Engineering. So just to set the scene before we get into the main contents of the report, we, we know the globe, we know the planet is getting warmer. Remarks even just today from the IPCC, you know, include wildfire damage, permafrost degradation, diversity loss, all these different things that we hear about in the news that are happening, their impacts are being increased, impacts are being felt increasingly, just current levels of global warming. And we know that while mitigation work is important, it's really that adaptation to climate change that can happen at a local level that's going to be most meaningful and most important within the context of what we're reporting on today. And so you'll find if you work your way through the report, that a lot of the next steps are broadly focused on adaptation, not explicitly mitigation. In terms of the assessment scope, so there's four parts to this. Firstly, that the climate hazards that are included in the project are those that are considered to be in direct control of the municipality. And that's specifically in terms of actions that can be taken to adapt to them. We include both sudden onset acute events. And so these are the short duration events that typically only last minutes, hours, days, or maybe weeks. And these would generally occur irrespective of climate change. Though their frequency, intensity and distribution, you know, will, will, it will change, could alter because of climate change. And examples of these include things like windstorms, freezing rain events, temperature extremes, wildfires, things like that. We also include slow onset or chronic stresses. And these in contrast are absolutely caused by climate change and the impacts are going to be unfolding gradually. They're going to be building up over longer timeframes, maybe decades or even longer. And these include things like warming trends in air and surface water temperatures as well as eco region shifts more broadly. We use RCP 8.5 scenario. So this is the high emission scenario. It's frequently referred to as business as usual, but really the take-home message here is that it's the, it's the worst case scenario. So we get the broadest picture across the, across the risk assessment. And then our time horizon is a 30-year time horizon out to the mid 2050s as it pertains to the risk assessment. You will note in the report that because we were lucky enough to partner with Park at the University of Regina, we have commentary on data that expands beyond that for reference and using their, using their climate projections. So the, the key findings of the report. Firstly, on, on temperatures, on daily mean temperature. Generally speaking, temperatures in every season are expected to increase as we look over the next 30 years and out towards the end of the century. These is warmer temperatures in every season and are likely to impact not just residents and visitors in terms of their ability to recreate and enjoy the municipality of Jasper, but also animals, plant species and other wildlife in the area. Generally, the climate data projections show about a five-degree Celsius increase in daily mean temperature across every season. When we say daily mean temperature, we mean the average temperature across a whole 24-hour period. So this obviously takes out the extremes of any given day or any, any, any period of time. There is a smoothing effect that's associated with that. But in terms of sort of a real feel perspective, if we compare the early data we have to the 1950s, we're looking at fall temperatures being more like winter temperatures in the future. And similarly, past, past summer temperatures will be more like spring temperatures in the future. That's the kind of difference we're looking at. And I think the implications on residents as well as visitors, but also wildlife and the potential increase for wildlife human interactions, which is something we are seeing in other areas, not just of Canada, but around the world, are significant. And we're going to talk about those when we get to next steps. The second key finding on extreme cold days, certainly the days with an average temperature of negative 30 or less are going to dramatically reduce on average across, across any given year. And related, Jasper is projected to experience a longer spring, summer, fall season and a shorter winter season. So those periods of freeze thaw, the fluctuations in a 24-hour period of going from a minus, a negative number to a, to a positive number are going to decrease. A warming climate generally is associated with a wetter climate. And the projection data that we have for the municipality of Jasper, you know, shows that we can expect an increase in the number of extreme rainfall events. This includes a general trend to more rain, that's liquid rain, not snow, on an annual basis. And also includes an increase in the likelihood of freezing rain events. And then lastly, on the key findings, increased variability in rainfall patterns alongside increased temperatures have the potential to increase wildfire and wildfire smoke risk. And obviously, you know, this has got huge implications, not just for residents and visitors, but again, for, for animals and wildlife. In terms of next steps and recommendations, we have some general ones here that I'll go through. But as you've worked your way through the report, you've noted that we have described the various different aspects of the municipality in terms of systems, economic, built, natural and social. We've done that to acknowledge that all of the various different parts of the risk assessment and their impacts have broad overlap across lots of different areas of the municipality. So I'm going to take each of those in sections coming up. But in terms of the sort of broad overarching opportunities for, for next steps, so certainly building on the results of the risk assessment to develop a climate change adaptation action plan would be a significant one. And use this both to target the high risks as identified in the assessment, but also to work with residents, departments, local businesses, other interested organizations, tourism, to, to look at where the risks are going to be most significant to those groups and to those, those organizations. To start to look at implementing earlier adaptation actions, the sort of lower hanging fruit. There is a certain momentum that we found to this kind of work and now the sort of snowball is off the cliff, so to speak. That, you know, the, the first action builds into the next action, builds into the next action. So these can have co-benefits. One action can lead to benefits in another. And they can be incorporated into existing practices and existing funding sources. Share this report as widely as can be. I know today is a venue for community members to hear about it. We hope that the report is accessible to everybody who wants to read it. But certainly bringing it into youth-led programs, you know, the Resilience Institute has a stories of resilience program. Just building awareness about resilience that can come from the type of climate change actions that are included in the report. And then look at collaborating with neighborhood communities. I think there is a real value in associating this work regionally and particularly broadening it out to other rights holders and developing a multi-valued approach to adaptation planning can really make it more holistic and more valuable in terms of the, the outcomes that come from any next steps. More specifically, on, on the individual components of, of the next step. So the economic system first. You know, climate change impacts have the potential to change people's perceptions of Jasper. We heard this during our engagement with various different departments in the municipality. And so, you know, how, how and what in ways this happens is, I think, a little bit unknown. But the tourism sector and the economic sector in general really is, I think, going to be on the front lines in terms of, of how Jasper can, can do adaptation and how that can be, can be enacted. Because it both represents a, there's some threats and some opportunities, but also the interface with the public and with residents and with visitors. And so there's that huge educational component as well and opportunities to show demonstration of good practice. On the built system, cool spaces, and these, these include low-tech solutions like shade trees and other cooling infrastructure can, can be hugely significant as a next step. As is non-combustion-based forms of energy. So renewable energy systems can both back for backup in, in an emergency setting, but also when there, when there are climate change impacts affecting the larger grid. And these can be done both at the municipal level and at the residential level. And then on natural systems, you know, partnerships with Jasper Tourism and tourism companies in general, I think, could play an important role in supporting water conservation efforts. This was a, a big part of the risk assessment that, that came towards the, came in the results. And collaborating with, with water users and interesting group, interested groups to create a dialogue around water conservation and sharing. So these are going to be residents, the commercial sector, environmental groups. And just continuing to share, this is a particular point that did come out quite a few times in the risk assessment. Share information with residents and the visiting public on, on the increased and changing risks in wildlife human interactions. This, this is something that we're noting in other parts of Canada and I think is going to be significant with Jasper in the face of the, the changing climate. And then on social systems, cooling spaces again are going to be important, particularly initiatives that support vulnerable populations. Increasing public access to outdoor cooling amenities. I've mentioned shade trees as just one. And reviewing the protocols for outside work and for those folks that need to spend time outside is going to be important as well. So that is a short overview of our, of our report and of its findings. I would again like to say thank you for the opportunity to present some of this report to you today. And I'd happily welcome any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open it up to councillors if you have any questions at the moment. And then in the meantime, maybe Mr. Given, you can kind of give us a, you know, what do we, what are the next steps?
Absolutely.
Maybe some questions can come up as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the council's considering. As, as noted in the presentation, the report does identify about 20 specific recommendations across those four thematic areas that Harry referenced, built systems, natural systems, social systems, economic systems. Would want to really point out that across a lot of the areas, the Resiliency Institute did a great job of reflecting Jasper's unique economic nature. The fact that our natural environment is a key part of the destination. And as council, like you know, our, our local economy really is based around visitor, you know, the visitor experience. And so threats and risks to that natural environment pose specific and very significant concerns for the future viability of our local economy. And that is, that's referenced in the report. And I think that that's likely unique to Jasper. I mean, not exactly unique. I'm sure Banff would have similar considerations. But it's different than many other communities in Alberta, you know, when it seems. So I want to thank the team for reflecting Jasper's unique nature when they speak about, about the impacts. And just to bring that sort of to a little bit of a finer point. Items like ice walks or glacier walks don't work well if there's no, you know, a shorter season with less ice. Um, items like ice walks um or uh glacier walks don't work well if there's no, you know, a shorter season with less ice. Uh, or in fact, if there's no glaciers, I mean, just that that's pretty dire, but it's very true. The risk to the destination or access to the destination to Jasper and our community. Um, could be very challenging if there are more instances of freezing rain. So there there really is something in here for the entire local community to take stock of and consider how they might adapt. Their operations in the future. Um, so administration's recommendation that's contained in the the stamp report is that. Committee received the climate risk assessment report for information. And the committee direct administration return to a future meeting with recommendations on developing a climate change adaptation action plan. As I mentioned, there are those twenty recommendations which provide a lot of uh a a lot of guidance. Um, but the intent of developing an action plan would be to allow us to align all the different steps and recommendations. With the broader goals and strategy of council. Um, and the desire would be to bring more efficiency by ensuring that we have coordinated efforts across the organization. And that we are able to consider linkages with other organizations such as Parks Canada. Or Tourism Jasper and as council saw, the uh Destination Stewardship Plan uh that was presented to council some time ago. References a lot of overlapping material, you know, we're starting to see. Recommendations and strategies from a number of different plans, from a number of different organizations really starting to coalesce and overlap. Uh, and so the intent of developing an action plan would be to ensure that we are working in silos. Um, that the municipality isn't going off in one direction where another partner may already be doing work in that area. The action plan would be something that we would consider administratively first and would come back to council. With the recommendation on costs associated with developing a plan. Uh, or what the the steps in developing a plan might look like. So we wouldn't show up. If council's for the recommendation for what we would show up at the next meeting with a plan. We would show up with a recommendation on how to go about developing that action plan um and any associated costs if there were.
Thank you. Uh, we've had some time, councillors, anything you'd like to add? Uh, Marilyn?
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Wilson, and just while we have the. Experts in the room virtually, um I thought I would ask one question. I I welcome um your ability to correct me. I am speaking just anecdotally from. Um, sixty some years of experience in the community and I. I wonder about um. The projection about the number of freeze thaw days. Um, you've indicated that over the next thirty years, it's going to reduce, but my unscientific. Ill-informed hunch is that in the short term. Freeze thaw um is increasing and probably will for a bit. So traditionally, winter started in Jasper in about November. We would typically get one week of thaw in January and then we'd have winter again until late March. Now we have the prospect and the fact that the actual experience of rain and melting every month of the year. Um, freeze thaw in fact is increasing in the short term. And it plays havoc with our roads and will continue to do so. So if we're looking at. Adaptation of that system. Um, I I wonder whether that is something that we should be focused on, at least short term, thinking that thirty years out. Um, maybe winters are so short that we don't worry anymore about freeze thaw, but. But for the next. Well, say in my future, which is limited. Um, it seems to me we're we're going to, we're going to have to deal with more ice on our sidewalks. More freeze thaw and the damage that that caused to our our built infrastructure.
Thank you for the for the for the question, for the comment. Um, I I hope that we were able to do this in the report, but I think this is one of these instances where it's so important to acknowledge. Uh, local, the the local knowledge, local perceptions, um local monitoring really of 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 what changes have it been experienced over. Uh, over time in in your community. Um, a- and I think this is really where having the climate projections that give us data out for the next thirty years. It is useful because we can see a a longer term trend. But it it certainly shouldn't be viewed at the expense of of the realities of of short, medium and long term implications. Of that longer term trend, because there are going to be fluxes, there's going to be changes. In and amongst the the larger, the the larger trend. And and I think one of the things that we we did here when we were when we were doing our engagement work on this project was the freeze thaw piece, particularly from an infrastructure perspective. Uh, pipes, foundations, buildings, uh, you know, community members' ability to. To move around the municipality and and to be able to walk around on on foot paths also came up. So I think one of, as as Bill has sort of, you know, rather eloquently said, one of the advantages of. Of doing a a climate change adaptation action plan is that it gives the space to sort of break down these these longer term trends. Into those short, medium and long term actions. And then you can build a strategy, you can sort of scaffold that out, not just in terms of actions, but in terms of. You know, the economics of of doing the work and all those different kinds of things and bring in these perspectives of uh what would happen in the short term. And what would happen in in the long term. So I. I have I have no reason to disagree with your with your comments in terms of. Uh, you know, what the short term could hold from a freeze thaw perspective, uh recognizing that maybe the long term trend is there for the future.
I'll just echo that. I live in Canmore and we experienced the same. I haven't been here. Wait as many decades as you, but through the time that I have been here, it's certainly increased to where. Most people now have to have the little crampons just to be able to get out of their house and walk down to the mailbox.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Council Melnick. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and thank you very much for the report. Um, I uh did go through the attachment um. With a lot of interest and uh to Mayor Ireland's comments about rain events and so on and. Precipitation, um I I was intrigued by the. Freezing rain and and precipitation chart on page twenty eight. Of the attachment. Um, where we see a spike both up and down during certain years in the future and and significant spike. And I'm and I'm intrigued that that we would have that type of event predicted. You know, thirty years from now or forty years from now. Um, methodology to do that, but um. Uh, i- it's basically, it's it's in anticipation probably that we will have years that will be off the chart, call it. And it's a matter of staring forward. I I just need to have an understanding of 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 those particular spikes in twenty sixty and twenty eighty.
My um, my wife is a climate scientist. And she has been telling me the the difficulties of of precipitation data. Uh, particularly, and I've been having lots of conversations with. With Dr. Souchin at the at at Park at the University of Regina on a on a similar note. So I think there's a few things to to unpick when it comes to the precipitation data. Uh, first and foremost, I think throughout the report. Uh, I would encourage the 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 view of the trends rather than any given individual year. Uh, of data as being representative of of the story and being representative of of the projection more widely. On the projection data itself, you know, we we mentioned, uh, we mentioned in the report, the the risk associated with wildfire events and wildfire smoke events. And and it's the, it's. The fluctuation in rainfall patterns that that also contributes to that. Because you have dry years and then you have you have wet years and it's the dry years that that can really be the the driver of wildfire events. In terms of the actual projection data, um I mean, the. The models that they use are based on on averages and then they're based on um. On associated climatic and atmospheric conditions. So I think. You know, will there be a a massive rain event in in two thousand and sixty? It's it's very difficult to tell, but I think the data was 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 pretty clear in terms of an annual increase uh over the over the long term. Laura, I don't know if you want to add anything else on that point.
Um, no, it's just that the the climate modeling, which has become quite sophisticated, comes from. Multiple different sources. So we're not looking at one model. We actually look at, I think we had twelve, was it twelve?
Twelve models, yeah.
Models that um. Climate scientists from around the world who do atmospheric work contribute to. And then we look at the trends. So when we present um something to a community, you don't want to see twelve different. Uh, uh, models, because it it's messy, but all of them are showing a trend. And that's what we're presenting. So that we can get into the nuances, but climate models, of course, are. I think imperfect, but not that imperfect. And if we look back at. The last, um, and I don't know if you've seen some of the news where climate scientists are are surprised, even the climate models that they're using maybe have been some conservative. In in what we're seeing. So the take home is. That the extremes we're seeing now are probably just going to get more and more extreme. And that goes with um. With rainfall too, where an average rainfall may happen in two days. So you're seeing these spikes in the actual models. I hope that helps.
And and just to just to finish, the climate data that um we use throughout this report. That's come from um from Park at the University of Regina. Or all that data um has been downscaled to a twenty five square kilometer resolution for the municipality. So it's it's really quite in-depth data that the municipality has now and and. In the closing of this project, we'll be making all of that data available to to the municipality. You'll have all the copies of all the data that we've been using. So that's that's part of the product of of this uh of this report as well.
I'm also devoted, Nick, also home. Thank you very much. Um, not questions, but maybe comments as usual for me. Um, I just want to encourage people to to actually click on the link. Um, on the agenda there because there's a ninety five page. Package there that we've we've been making reference to, and I think there's some really good information there. Um, and if I could maybe. Uh, encourage uh administration to maybe post something on our Facebook site and then just have that. Expand alone on our on our regular site, because I I need for the community to to be up to speed and and understanding. What this is all about is really important. I I think that there could be a lot of people in the community that would be interested in the information there. Um, and you know, and not to be, uh, don't shy away from the appendices. Either because the 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 actual uh phones of the reporters start on page fifty. And uh, one thing that I that was encouraging for me to to see was um. On page eighty two, that document where it says uh to continue to expand on the work that's already underway. Um, the research is uh indicated, has indicated that, um, you know, our policies and procedures. Provide a a a strong foundation to build upon. So, you know, gradually. Um, you know, the people that have put their time in the past and and um our evolution of of where we are today. So I just wanted to make a little reference to that. Uh, taking steps over time to to get us to a a better place. I'm not going to say a good place, but. Um, I I really appreciate all the information that we have here and there's a lot to absorb. Absorb, but I know it's going to take me at least three reads to to really, um, you know. Know exactly everything that's uh in this report, but there's some really, really good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, and thank you for this report. I found it very interesting. Couple of things kind of stuck out. I don't have any questions, but uh comments as well. One around our water conservation efforts and. If I'm sometimes living in a national park, there's a lot of water around us and we just don't think that we could be losing water. But the second I take my son to anywhere in Alberta for hockey this winter, there's no snow in the fields and it's. Working, it is worrisome. Um, another thing I found quite interesting was this potential need at one point for hotels to install air conditioning units as the world heats up. And. You you know, the things we can do, creating uh inventory of cooling infrastructure, uh outdoor spaces with shade. I wonder, I I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm quite positive we're doing some work in commemoration park at some point. There's some money for that and maybe that can, that should be taken into consideration for our vulnerable residents.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I. Um, I I just prepared to return back to the report and and you had indicated about um in our discussion about rainfall and snowfall. Average is um and refer to page thirty about wildfire and wildfire smoke. In that um, I think a work around wildfire um mitigation uh needs to be current. So it needs to be constant. And um, even though we may have done a number of projects around the community and and continue to do work. Um, I think the report is indicating that for this particular uh threat. Um, we really can't take the foot off the pedal, that we need to continue to work towards um. Making our forests more resilient to fire spreading and to try to eliminate these uh events. Um, so I commend the report in in linking the two. And appreciate the uh all of the effort that went into this. It's uh, as councillor Demota said, there's a lot of information in here. And will require a couple of reads to to really grasp it all.
Also, Roxanne.
I just wanted to express my appreciation and I think this is a really critical uh. Element to be to uh and I am very glad that we undertook this project because it's. A critical piece for uh all residents to consider and for council and other decision-making bodies to consider in future decisions.
So we may have exhausted questions and comments. Are there motions arising, councillors? Yeah, Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there are any other uh comments from council, I would make the motion that committee receive the attached climate risk assessment report for information. And that committee direct administration to return to a future committee meeting with recommendations on developing a climate change adaptation action plan.
Think of twenty sixty. Uh, councillors, uh, any questions, comments about the motion? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed, then motion carries. Uh, thank you uh to the two of you uh for joining us today. We really appreciate um uh you taking the time and presented to us today.
Thank you. It was a pleasure and uh.
Very much.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Bye for now.
Okay, uh, moving on to item seven point two. Uh, paid parking correspondence, uh. Think we're going to listen it on on this one?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, we brought this one back as a verbal. It's an item that's on the motion action list. And essentially, we received correspondence from a resident in July of twenty twenty three. Um, regarding the five hundred block of Geeky Street. And um essentially, I will try to share my screen. And show you the area in question. Um. So you should be seeing a map of our paid parking zones currently. And uh, so the zone in question is right here. Um, so Geeky Street, five hundred blocks, so across from Robson Park, across from the library essentially. Um, is in the paid parking zone, as is the entirety of Geeky Street from the four hundred blocks to the six hundred block. And this has been the case, uh, we're heading into our fourth year of paid parking. So the first year of the program where. Um, we had a pilot project that only affected Patricia and cannot on street. This area was uh resident parking. So the entirety of Geeky Street was. Resident parking on the residential side, recognizing that only those two streets were in the program. But then uh, starting the following year, so for two years now, heading into our third year, this entire area is part of the paid parking zone. And um. In a nutshell, the request from the resident is to return that uh. Five hundred block of Geeky Street to resident parking only. Because uh parking is challenging in the area, is it is busy and it's difficult for residents to park in front of their own properties was the. The essence of the correspondence we received. And unfortunately, I think that's the case for every resident that lives in the paid parking zone. Uh, it's parking at a premium and that's the reason that it's part of the. Uh, paid parking zone. There's a reference to the three hundred. Uh, paid parking zone. There's a reference to the three hundred block being resident only, and that's more fair to residents that live there. That's also outside of the paid parking zone, not in the primary area. Therefore, there's less demand, but still. An area that we wanted to protect for for residents to be able to park there. Um, so that is the request that came in July. Uh, council had initially referred the matter to uh after. Uh, having received information about paid parking and making decisions about the program. So here we are. Um, so if council wanted to address uh the. Question or concern from the resident, a motion to the effect of uh committee recommend council. Uh, turning the five hundred block of Geeky Street residential side to resident only parking would be essentially the request that the resident is making. Um, I can tell you that uh this is zone ten eleven, as in it's twelve hour on street parking, so two hours is in front of commercial premises. This area is a twelve hour parking zone. And although we don't have stats directly for that area, um, in twenty twenty three, we made one hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. In zone ten eleven. And if you sort of divide that by the number of stalls or the number of blocks, uh, that block alone. Brings in probably twelve thousand dollars of revenue. So. Returning it to residential would uh would take away that revenue, but would also. It's it's sort of in the middle of the paid parking zone, so it's a decision that would be. A bit of a one off to turn it back to residential parking. Um, but essentially, that's the request from the resident and uh we're just circling back on the council motion, which. I do have here. Um, so the motion from council was that council direct administration to refer the matter of resident and paid parking along Geeky Street to a committee of the whole meeting. Following the conclusion of the twenty twenty three program. So. So that's why we're here uh based on that directive from council. Administration's recommendation would be to leave it as is, so leave it as part of the paid parking zone. But if there is appetite from council to. Um, address that concern from the residents in that manner, then you could uh refer or recommend that council. Change the zone. Thanks.
Hey, thank you for that. Um, councillors, councillor Demota?
Yeah, actually, I I do have a question and then probably just to to lead on to to some other. Observations and then maybe some direction. Um. I just uh I'm just curious to if this. Part of the discussion will be taking place in the transportation master plan. Paid parking as far as parking in the community as also. Maybe through you, uh, deputy mayor to uh Mr. Gill.
Uh, thanks, Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Demota. So I I I think uh. It would certainly be a consideration and the data from our paid parking program in terms of the the volumes that we've been seeing would likely inform the. Uh, transportation master plan. Um, I don't know that it will take a detailed look at. You know, sort of on the street parking layout at me, uh, just in terms of, you know, how much off street should we have? Is it in the right places? May have some of that. I know the existing plan, the twenty eighteen plan does have some of that. Um, but I don't know that. Uh. The discussion about which streets should be resident only would be a level of detail that would be considered in the plan. I think really the discussion here is. Does that five hundred block? Of geeky, is it reasonable or likely? To exclude everyone but residents from parking there during periods. I think that's really the essence of this question. Um, I think from an administrative perspective, uh, revenue aside, I think the answer is. That would be very, very challenging on an enforcement basis on the fringes of the the central business district or the downtown core. Um, you know, we. You know, we can see the logic in that and 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 it. We can action that. As we get closer and closer to the core, I think. You know, since we heard from one presentation today, you can walk from one end of Jasper to the other. So one block off of the downtown core. Is very challenging to say that that's residential. Uh, we do have um competing interests, you know, residents living some right in the downtown core, some just off. Um, and I think the layout of the program is currently structured. Probably strikes. As reasonable a balance as we can find. And and to be clear, I understand that that won't satisfy everybody's individual concerns. Um, but it's probably about the best balance that we can find. Um, because I think it's unlikely to restrict. You know, others from parking that area in terms of enforcement, it'd be very challenging. No, and I don't expect that all details of what the transportation master plan.
Okay, I think the reason why I was going there is because. I'd I'd like to start being on on a little bit more expertise in this area because we're starting to piecemeal and and having discussions around. You know, where do we stop and and where do we maximize opportunities here? And you know, there's financial uh concerns. Um, you know, last year, uh, we expanded a little further on cannot and uh on each in each direction. I know that in the um residential areas like the three hundred block, um, I just have personal experience because I used to live there and and councillors have heard me say that. You know, if you didn't get home by five o'clock in the summertime, you're not going to find parking until about nine thirty there. Uh, people will argue, well, you know, even with with the people on Geeky Street that you do have parking in the back. Um, you know, but there's also multiple residents and I get that too, right? So there's there's arguments on both sides. If you go, if you walk along uh commemoration park on Pyramid Lake Road. Um, in the summertime. For most of the day. Um, a lot of that free parking available for residents. On either side is completely taken up all the way to. You can't find a parking spot there because of the paid parking. And so we're pushing vehicles, visitor vehicles out into residential areas. Uh, the more that the paid parking expands. So I I think we need a a bigger, more professional outlook than councillors making decisions on. You know, whether the the revenue potential is lost here or we're hurting residents over here. I I think we need a a more detailed plan. I think it's great that we've found some uh alternate sources of revenue with this, but um I think that there is some impacts that. You know, we don't have the full expertise on. So if we need to, um, you know. Push this back to uh. The uh transportation master plan or even the traffic review. Um, committee. Um. Would be worthwhile because I I don't want to start making decisions on taking this down and putting that up anywhere. Um, I do uh have a con- I did did have a concern on the area right in front of Nesters. What's called Nesters now, there's there's. There's no um permits or any specific time parking there, and I I feel that. Uh, visitors are taking advantage of that blank spot too, and that hurts residents going to especially seniors that want to get in and out to to grab. Groceries during the day. So I I wanted to bring that to. Council's attention again. Thank you.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have a question for administration and then a comment. My question is. If a resident lives on on that space, can they, did they get a resident pass that allows them to pass or to park in that? Paid zone like for as long as they need to?
Miss Nell.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the councillor hall. Um, yes, they uh absolutely get free parking and simply need to register their vehicle with the municipality and they can park there for free.
Thank you for that. Um, my comment is that we are going into our first summer with public transit. I imagine and I'm quite confident we will see a reduction of vehicles coming from the campgrounds. And outline areas because there is now an option to ride transit into town. So. Like until we really make a bunch of decisions on this, we should wait and see what that looks like. Um. Watching down council meetings, they were able able to eliminate three thousand vehicles last year with their with their public transit. So we know we're not bound. But even if we can eliminate a thousand vehicles this summer coming into town. So I think until we start to turn things back to resident only, I I do believe we will be seeing a lot of people taking transit in from campgrounds and outline hotels.
Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson and through you to uh Director Nada. So um, the five hundred block, four hundred block. Six hundred block. Are all um eight parking, correct, on geeky?
That is correct.
Is the three hundred block paid parking as well?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through the councillor Melnick, it is not. Um, it is on Canot Drive. That was added last year, so by Nesters and and the parking lot across the street there, but Patricia Street and Geeky Street are resident parking only. On the three hundred block.
Thank you for that. I'm I'm trying to understand the request by the resident that. Um, so basically, we've got three blocks of residents who are inconvenienced and need to park two to four blocks away from their home. Um. Two to three blocks away from their home. And what the request is, is to create a a centralized resident only parking area. Um, those other vehicles uh for paid parking will find other places to park. Um, I'm actually in favor of of. Uh, creating this uh resident only parking area because it'll assist not only the residents on. The five hundred block, but also the four hundred and six hundred block. Um, there's a lot of area in there where there's one hour parking. You know, we've got our emergency services uh. Uh, area in the uh there as well. Um. This particular building is is basically um fifteen unit parking in the front of this building. We've eliminated parking in front of the uh. Uh, on the street in front of the Seaton Healthcare Center. So, you know. With yellow um lines there or yellow curves, I I think this might be prudent for us to maybe consider this request. And uh, um, I, like I said, I would be in favor of of changing that particular block to resident parking only.
Listen up.
Thank you. Excuse me, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um. To councillor Melnick's comment, I think there there is uh parking, there are parking areas available in the zone. Or or in the adjacent area, namely um the parking lot at the McCready Center. So the upper parking lot. At McCready Center was deemed as resident only last year. That was a trial. Um, we weren't seeing the numbers in terms of paid parking for that parking lot specifically. So we turned it to resident parking only and. Uh, utilization has not been great, but um that is an area that is available to people that live um. On that five hundred block of Geeky Street as the case may be right now. And also along Maynard Avenue, uh, the entirety of Maynard Avenue sort of. Um, towards the hospital, if you will, um, doesn't have any restrictions. The side of the cottage medical clinic is uh slated as resident parking only because there were issues there with. Residents trying to access uh medical services, but the other side where the churches are um is all. Free parking essentially. And uh, I think it it's not formally stated as such because we don't have a report in front of you, but administration's recommendation here is to. Not take any action. So essentially leave the zone as is, and uh that is very much the view of the traffic advisory committee and administration's. Sort of professional expertise that we've developed over time, uh, dealing with paid parking, recognizing that that's not traffic engineers or. Or people that may be hired to do a transportation master plan, but um our recommendation here is certainly to leave it as is for the upcoming season.
I'm going to give councillor Keller an opportunity to know.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Thank you, councillor Melnick. Um, my question for you, Deputy Wilson, is to director and Don. I cannot remember. Is that two hour parking area or it's um you can park there um for up to. The day. Or is it two hour? I just can't remember.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the councillor Keller MP, that is a twelve hour parking zone. Um, and actually, it's not really twelve hours. It's more like seventy two hours, as in. Um, there are no time restrictions. The restriction that is there is for paid parking. So you have to pay between nine AM and nine PM. So residents technically could leave their vehicle there. For up to seventy two hours and mostly that is uh complaint driven, as in the seventy two hours is only enforced when there there's a problem with the vehicle being there. Either blocking sightlines or or things like that, but uh for all practical purposes, it's seventy two hours.
Thank you for that, Mr. Don.
So, Demota? Yeah, um, what I'm about to say is no knock to administration and I. Find myself saying this often, but in all sincerity, I I think we could do a better job at marketing that empty parking lot. Um, nearly McCready Center, the upper parking lot from downtown. Um, it wasn't used, but you know, I I ran into a few people. Um, and you know, again, anecdotally in the community that didn't know. That that place was free for residents. And I think part of the promotion for, you know, people that need or have to drive from, you know, the. Far ends of town to get into to downtown. That we could be doing a better promotion than that. I don't know how to do it because, again, that's not in my wheelhouse, but. Um, I I think that we can, I I don't know if there was any advertising last year, but I think we should. Uh, emphasize that, put a little bit more pressure while we're on this conversation. I I think there's a missed opportunity there because it's a big spot. We could fit a lot of vehicles in there. Thank you.
Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Through you two. Miss Nada, I just want clarity on. Resident passes, um. Particularly. In reference to the. Four, five and six hundred blocks of. Geeky. Is it? Designed to limit parking to a resident of that block or is it residents of Jasper?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the mayor Ireland. Um, if I understand the question correctly, in this instance. It is about not paying for parking as in. So the resident permit gives you um the opportunity to park and not have to pay. Uh, so your license plate is registered in hotspot. When our enforcement officers scan your plate, it it returns as paid even though it's not. Um, i- is how. The resident pass functions within the paid parking zone. Now, in the residential areas, so for the resident parking only, um. Only residents, only vehicles with permits can park in those areas. Um. So it's twofold. The the resident pass. Allows you to park for free in the zone, but also allows you to park period in the adjacent residential zones. So specifically in the case at hand, um. It it is about not paying and and being able to park there, if that makes sense.
I I think so, but um you can be the judge um based on my next question. Um. Is it then permissible um for me as a resident and my license plate is entered in the system? So I. Like every other resident can park for free. Um, that means I could park. For twelve hours. Um, anywhere along the four, five hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred block of. Geeky, for example.
Yes, that is correct.
Without any other sort of a pass and I I have as much opportunity to park there as any resident of of those blocks.
Yes, that is correct.
Is it possible um in all the statistics that have been accumulated? To determine. How many? Residents are using parking in that area. Um, so people who might choose to drive to work and. Not go into onto Patricia and cannot but park over on. Geeky, um, thinking in fact perhaps that they're freeing up spaces in the core, but taking up spaces in front of. Somebody else's resident.
We don't have data on this. Um, and essentially, after the year where we had trialed um the five hundred hours of of free parking, so. When action was required on street. As in when a resident parked there and then you had to do something, you had to go in the hotspot app and tap in or tap out essentially. Uh, we did gather some data that year, which was two years ago. And um, but when we moved away from the program, we essentially lost the tracking ability um. To be able to have that data, but also those amounts were pretty negligible in. That would have been twenty twenty two. Um, as in uh the number of sessions that were logged in in comparison to the number of paid. Visitor sessions that were logged in was. Uh, the amount was minimal and that was the basis for moving away from that program. So so in short, we don't have that data because it's a one time registration process only. Um, having that said, the implementation of a program where on street action is required is. Uh, proven to be quite complex and and resulted in in a lot of administrative hours going towards it in twenty twenty two. Um, that's not to say. Um, that's not to say that it can't be explored in the future, but it's certainly something that we would need to spend a. A reasonable amount of time working with hotspot to develop and implement properly.
If I may have one final question. Uh, on that final note then. Despite the the administrative challenges. Would it be possible to? Issue permits? To residents of those three blocks on Geeky. Um. To park on the residential side. Of those blocks, so if you're in the four hundred block. You could park in front of your house on the. On the four hundred block, five hundred and limit it to the to the particular block um on which you live. And on the side where the houses are uh. Four hundred block, I guess it's both sides, but. No, it's not, that's the school on the other side and then Robson Park. Um, and by the uh by the Anglican Church. Could that all be left as paid parking? Um, and limit the other sides to resident only or residents of those particular blocks?
Mr. Given.
Yeah, i- i- if I may, I'll I'll jump in, I guess we're sort of starting to get into some questions of. Uh, you know, the the implementation aside, because anything is possible depending on how much time and effort and money you want to spend on creating a unique customized solution specific to just the citizens. But the other principle I think that that's at play is. To what extent? Does somebody get to claim full control and utilization of the public property that's directly in front of their private property? Uh, you know, we have a commercial use of public space system that says if you want to use. Public property to your benefit as a business, there's a system for that and we have a way of regulating it. I think the question here is is. Somewhat similar and that's like. How much of the curb and the street and the sidewalk are you entitled to as a resident that lives directly there? Can your neighbor park in front of your house or can you only you park in front of your house? And that's a bit of the challenge, so I I just would. Offer that caution that there is also this principle at play, we start to say, okay, well, only those residents of Jasper. And park on this portion of the public street that all residents of Jasper. Are contributing taxes to remove snow on, fill potholes on and so on and so on, so so um. Because it wouldn't be a surprise to me if we created a system that allowed. Owners that are directly adjacent to a piece of public property. In one area of town, if other owners where there's congestion might say, well, I also would like to have. Exclusive use. Of the street that is in front of my house.
I think Counselor Keller, he was up and then uh Counselor Demoto, then Counselor Hall.
I was going down the line that Mayor Ireland was going down. But just on Mr. Given's comment. We have other areas in town that is just residence only of those streets that park. And some of the other areas of town that are adjacent to the paid parking.
I I. I would love to direct him on to confirm whether that's the case or not, I think what we do is we have a system where. Our enforcement folks would go by. Scan plate. Is this a resident plate, yes or no? Yes, it is a resident plate registered in the system. Okay, you're fine. And so if I wanted to go and park. As a, you know, I've read my system vehicles, if I want to go and park in one of the resident only areas, I am in fact a resident of Jasper and I'm entitled to park in that area. So I don't think it's down to. House number, you know. Four thirteen Geeky. Is only allowed, is uh you know, exclusive use to that support thirteen Geeky. Director Don, can you confirm whether I've got that right or not?
Yes, thank you, CEO Given, so so absolutely, resident permits are the same for everyone, it doesn't matter where you live. And uh so all residents that are registered can park in the resident only zones as well as in the paid parking zone. And uh to sort of go back to Mayor Ireland's uh question and and similarly echoed by Counselor Keller, her MP. Without making everyone, every resident. Did have an on-street action, so so clicking in, clicking out of the app or scanning signage or doing anything like that. Um, we wouldn't be able to restrict certain zones to. Uh, the residents that live imme- immediately in the area, so. So it would require a system where all residents would have to take action on street in order to implement that. And like Mr. Given said, anything is possible with the amount of time and. Resources uh dedicated to it to make it work.
Counselor Demoto.
Well, here we are again, we can spend all day on the what ifs and the different scenarios and stuff um. I I think we just, we should get some somebody to take a look at this and. Um, I'm not to say, not saying that the administration or the Traffic Advisory Committee. We have a recommendation in front of us, you know. Um, personally, I've always felt that. Um, not so that you can claim a spot right in front of your house, but if you live on a certain stretch. That's permit only, if you live on that street, you should probably have a permit for that particular street on your thing. But that's just me, I'm not an expert, that's just anecdotal from. You know, where I used to live, uh where some of the people I talked to have pressures, but that's just. Hearsay on my part, I'd like to see a little bit more of an extensive approach on. What are the proper and and right things to do, but I think that if you have paid parking and you have residents in a particular area that are fighting for spots, you make it. Paid parking and. Uh, anywhere on that street, if you live there, you should have a permit.
I just got to jump in, um, we as council asked administration to look at this, they have looked at it, they are. Our experts, I I think they've done their due diligence, I don't know if we need to take this one off and push it and and. Give it more of a spotlight. Um, if there's motions to be made, if anybody does support this, then. I would entertain those, um, but like I said, we could, you know, talk about a whole bunch of different areas. Um. And the benefits of resident parking and and all of that, but this one's in front of us, we asked uh administration to look at it. So I think we've got a fair amount of information on that topic. Uh, are there motions arising? If not, we'd like to, yeah, go ahead, Miss, uh, sorry, Counselor Hall.
I still have a comment if that's okay. Chair, okay, um. I I think too, if we were to limit the the block right in front of uh residents to just those residents, they may not all have vehicles. They might park parking in the back, like that that just might be like the extra space in front if we if we do that. Um, and to Councilor Melnick's uh point a bit ago about. Their residents there are forced to park two, three blocks away, that's only if there's no spot in further place, like I think they can get there like to Councilor Demoto saying before five. And get their spot, uh just a very, another one quick question about the parking lot, I guess this could be for Director Nada. Uh, that upper lever in the Creed Center, was it limited to to seventy two hours as well or could that, was that? I know that was uh resident parking only, what was there limit on that?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Hall, um. In the absence of a time limit, seventy two hours is uh the timeframe in the Traffic. Safety Act, so so. So in a nutshell, there is no time limit uh on that parking lot, like I said, unless um there's an issue with a vehicle that's blocking sightlines or that's. Uh, broken down or leaking or things like that, so so it's not something we proactively enforce unless there's an issue, so. So yes, tentatively seventy two hours is the time limit there.
Counselor Demoto.
For the record, I wasn't saying that every house gets a permit, I'm just saying if you want a parking in front of your house, somewhere on that street. Get a permit. If we, if that's available, that's all I would say.
Hey, councilors, if there's no motions regarding that item seven point two. Going once, going twice, we'll move on to. Item seven point three.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe if we could just have a motion to receive the presentation for information uh for the update for information uh. We'd like to close something that's on the motion action list that there that was presented to council at least and there wasn't. To that direction.
Councilors. The absence of motion, we move on. All right.
I will make the motion that. Committee accept the. Paid parking correspondence and report as information. I will make the motion that committee accept the paid parking correspondence and report as information. Sure.
Sorry, I was just saying accept or receive.
Accept or information. Receive it.
Uh, yeah, I'll call the question on paper. And not opposed, motion carries. Uh. Request for a quick break, so we'll uh it's ten fifty now, uh call a recess and be back at it at eleven o'clock. Okay, welcome back. Um, we are on agenda item seven point three. Jasper Hotel Association request and it's a verbal as well, so I'm going to look to Mr. Given. To direct us there.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, this is an emergency management item, uh, the request from the uh association was for more engagements in our emergency management planning efforts. And Director Nada is leader of that area, has had discussions with the association, so I'll turn over to Director Nada.
Director Nada, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, as CEO Given outlined, uh, this item is in relation to a request from the Jasper Hotel Association that came to council in December, I believe. And uh it is noted on the motion action list as uh. That council referred the request to the Emergency Management Agency and request a status update at a future committee of the whole meeting. Uh, so here we are, and essentially uh the request from the Hotel Association that came in writing was to um. How to get to better integration with the municipal emergency management team. And so we've taken that request and also in discussion with Mr. Given, we've identified that. Um, engagement and communications with businesses ahead of the hazard season and specifically during an emergency. Uh, is part of our work plans for the spring, so we've started. Started acting on that and uh I have met with uh Mr. Cooper, who is the uh president of the Hotel Association last week. Uh, we've also started engaging with Tourism Jasper to understand. Their concerns and opportunities for collaboration uh with regards to emergency management. And essentially this status update is to let you know that uh we are actively engaged with our business partners and it is part of our. Strategy um heading into spring here, so as you can imagine, we're quite busy with uh preparedness and training and exercising for. Uh, the wildfire season coming up. And um. Yeah, so it's to let you know that uh this request is is taken care of and that we're we're on it is why we're here today and uh in a nutshell. How we function and how we organize ourselves during an emergency is not something that is widely known or understood by uh our our community partners and sort of. That's the uh communication piece around how we function and how how to best get a hold of us. And provide their inputs into the emergency management framework during an emergency is is the crux of the work that we're. Um. Putting together and um. Yeah, so I'm happy to take any questions, but essentially this is a verbal update on that. Motion action list item that we're hoping to check off the list and let you know that uh we're engaged in meeting with our partners.
Thank you for that update, uh, councilors. Questions for Mr. Don? Counselor Demoto.
Well, we, as we've seen interruptions have a have a very big economic impact on our community and I understand. Uh, the concern by uh some of those segments and I think it's important to at least have discussions on uh communication and participation, thank you.
Councilors, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the presentation um. For information. Counselor Keller, we uh will make the motion uh on paper. They're not opposed. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item seven point four, uh, two thousand twenty-three property tax receivable write-off request. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, I'll be handling this item, uh, this is a piece of business that council has seen before and the recommendation from administration is that committee recommend council direct administration to write off property tax receivable for roll. Uh, five. Hundred thousand uh for the provincial building for half the amount levied, uh, which totals thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-three cents. And the council authorized administration to process this write-off annually going forward. Um, I won't go through all of the past history, but I do want to acknowledge that there's one uh typo in the report. Uh, final paragraph of the background. Uh, is talking about the twenty twenty-three tax year, which is the subject of this report. Um, and you can see that we've inadvertently pasted the uh the amount uh from the previous year, so. The correct total uh of the write-off for twenty twenty-three is reflected in the recommendation. Um, we just have that oversight in the third paragraph. Um, the history on this is that um. As a municipal government, uh Jasper cannot levy taxes on the other two boards of government, provincial or federal. Um, historically, um, both provincial and federal governments, though, have had systems in place to acknowledge that. Their properties benefit from local services provided by municipalities, uh, which and those services are paid for by property taxes. Uh, at the federal level, uh, they call this payment in lieu of taxes, so uh the federal government will pay an amount that is. Equal to the property tax that would have been levied against that property, uh, and that system is pretty straightforward. Uh, similar system um called grants in lieu of taxes or grants and place of taxes has existed for a long time at the provincial level. And generally was quite straightforward, uh, similar to the federal system. Up until uh, uh, freshman twenty nineteen, uh, at that time, the provincial government. Said that they would only pay seventy-five percent of the twenty nineteen property tax levy. Um, and only fifty percent of levies going forward in future years, uh, and so we've been under that system now since twenty nineteen where the provincial government is paying less than the amount. Of property taxes that are levied against the provincial building. Um, in twenty twenty-three, the taxes that would have been owed on the provincial building based on the same type of assessment as applied to every other. Property in Jasper, um, the province would have owed sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Um, but the province. Has clearly stated that they're only going to pay fifty percent of that amount through their uh payment of taxes system. Uh, and that's where administration is recommending that. Uh, well. The principle is certainly something that we would. Vigorously debate with the province and while we. And we would point to the federal government as paying their fair contribution. It is unlikely that uh. That we will be able to independently change the province's approach to this. And as a consequence, this is an annual piece of business that um the municipality is going to have to do. And so that's why we have that second part of the recommendation that council provide that sort of ongoing uh. Authorization for administration to to process this write-off on an annual basis, uh, because this write-off amount does exceed. Uh, administration's independent authority to to write off any amounts over to this. I'm happy to answer any questions about this, um, and I believe we have all of the information uh that council made in.
Thank you for that, uh, councilors. Any comments, questions? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wonder if this started at seventy-five percent in twenty twenty, do we see this going to there and we're just not going to pay any of their. Payment and leave taxes moving forward?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, this time the province hasn't given any notice of that as an intention. Um, certainly at the time, uh, when it was announced in twenty nineteen, it was. So significant concern of municipalities, they have held it at this fifty percent level, um, now for a number of years. Um. I wouldn't want to speculate on what the province mayor may not do in the future, um, but uh. That's because they haven't given us any other indication uh of any change in the system to our benefit or. To our detriment, uh, either way.
I would imagine that this, it, I mean, it it's a fairly small amount to our municipality, but I would imagine across the province. It it could amount a lot more, would this be something we would maybe consider taking to other municipalities of the resolution? Would other or other, I'm sure other municipalities and cities are. Not happy with this.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Council Hall, yes, uh, this has been the subject of advocacy by other municipalities over the years, I think there have been resolutions, I know the board has been engaged in it. Um, I don't know if there are any currently active resolutions, um, after. After so many years, a resolution will expire, um, we could look and see if there's any need to sort of. Restate municipalities' interest in this, I think we have broad support for that. Uh, because there has been advocacy in the past, I'm not aware of whether there's any current advocacy.
I wonder if there'd be any um appetite for that in the legislative committee, uh, we have time, I think it is May is when. We we have to get our resolutions in. we we have to get our resolutions in. Is that correct?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I think that's correct. I would just have to look to see. Um, and I was also gonna, I can do a bit of research to see if there are any existing active resolutions.
I just, I look at this number for us, it's thirty-two thousand dollars. If I'm correct, that's basically what we cut from that crisis team or crisis outreach position that directory brought to us in the fall. Which is needed. We we could use this money. I I get, I know it's, it seems like a small amount, but to us that would that would fund a full-time crisis outreach worker.
Counselor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, I uh, realize that the provincial government is gonna do what they're going to do. And um, although in discussions at the um, Zoom meeting that I participated in, this is uh, something that is a concern across the province in all jurisdictions. So while we will have to write off the amount that they're not going to pay, I would disagree with not doing it automatically going forward. I think we still need to express our um, disappointment to the provincial government and do that by letter every year. Um, because it will become, it could be a point where they're gonna run a a pretty large surplus, and they may be inclined to change that percentage from fifty percent to sixty percent. But by not having our voice forward every year, we um, are not joining the rest of our fellow uh, municipalities throughout the province who probably would like to see that restored to the seventy-five percent. So I would be in favor of separating the two recommendations to have a vote on it and then uh, as such, um, I'd like to continue the practice of writing to the province about our disappointment in that decision to be at fifty percent.
Thank you for that. I see a lot of head nods. Um, Counselor Demoto?
Well, this is where I kind of have an opposition to where um, I used to support writing a letter and stuff, but you know, sometimes you gotta take one for the team. Um, we made some initiatives with the federal government in the past where we weren't paying land rent, and that never got us anywhere. I think that when we started to to work a little bit hand in hand with others, uh, we made progress. So I I think now that we're getting closer to having discussions on uh, reserve municipality status. I think it's it's time to to build champions in our in our current government. Um, because I I I think if if we continue to to bark on at thirty-two thousand, uh, when we can be talking about, you know, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in maybe potential um, revenue tools. Um, I would rather um, not really poke the bear and and, you know, give it a few berries. Because I I think it's important now to to build relationships and uh, I I think we've said or or made our peace, or not made our peace, but said our fair share in the in the first few years of this. I don't think it's going anywhere. Um, and I'd rather build relationships uh, for like bigger positive change at the at the higher levels at this point. So I think that uh, you know, screaming from the rooftops on on, you know, an item like this isn't gonna really change anything, and I comes down to uh, finance and um, the portfolio of uh, municipalities. We need to get support in that in the provincial government. Thank you.
Counselor Waxer?
Well, I can see some uh, sense in what Counselor Demoto has said. Um, I wondered whether in, if if we choose to uh, just accept this, um, I wonder whether in the our budget uh, preamble, if we can always include the fact that uh, only fifty percent of the levy is is being collected from the provincial government. Because I think that is an important piece, just as the land rent and the increase in policing costs. Um, it it does factor into our budgets. And uh, then I had one other comment. Um, did I read this correctly? That uh, we have not yet received the uh, the levy, and I wondered whether that is um, if they would uh, normally be paying in the summer for twenty twenty-three, like all the residents and businesses.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, so I would have to check and see is uh, on when they typically, as you can see, pass this through, there's some variability there. Um, and so uh, you know, March, December, October, so uh, provincial government, you know, doesn't really have a lot of consistency when they do that. Again, uh, you know, our ability to compel them to do so is somewhat limited. Um, so so no, we don't uh, know exactly when that will be paid, but yes, it is reflective of the 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 twenty twenty-three year. Um, the other thing, I just wanted to make sure that it's it's clear to council. Absolutely, if council chooses to uh, not support the second recommendation, uh, would certain administration certainly understand and appreciate the reasons why. But there is a a practical administrative uh, requirement for us to write off debts that we know that we're not gonna receive in order to close our twenty twenty-three year rent books. And so uh, so that's why the first part of the recommendation, um, we can continue to bring these recommendations annually. Uh, we can attempt to find other ways to recognize this on an ongoing basis, council wish, but we will need to uh, have that right on the process, uh, because the laws is to close off our our year financial statements.
Uh, may I ask a question? The municipality is a tenant of this building as well?
Yes, sir.
And approximately how much do we pay at rent? Uh, and is it market value rent?
Uh, I would say that it's below market value. Um, I can't, actually, I would say that's significantly below market value. I would have to look, because if numbers come into mind, I'd be allowed to say that publicly unless I can be certain of it.
But probably more than thirty-two thousand. Whereas I just gotta highlight in fact that, you know, municipalities paying them rent thirty-two thousand, and uh, they're owed, you know, sixty. Uh, they owe us sixty, but they're taking fifty percent off, so really they're operating, you know, at no cost or
I, yeah, I I I think that that's a, that's probably a fair way to look at the issue, but you know, numbers maybe plus or minus, but I think it's pretty close that the municipality likely pays to the province to occupy that space, be close to what the province could or should be paying to occupy the municipality.
Uh, Mayor?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I I have um, a question or two for Mr. Given through you, um, and then a comment about earlier discussions. This is the first year, I think, Mr. Given, that we've been provided with a copy of the tax notice. Which is really interesting. I, I don't know whether you can um, explain the assessment calculation, but I I'm really curious in the three different items that make up the total assessed value. My understanding is that there are three different lots that are in play here. There's the, on the corner, um, the the building occupied by Jeep, so I presume that that might be the urban nonprofit exempt. Um, then there is the courthouse, which might be the provincial urban municipal, um, with the big front stage. And then there is um, the lot where where our cost is. Uh, which might be the urban municipal exempt, though. I'm just guessing and I'm I'm wondering how the assessment might be based, um, whether it would be on sort of highest and best use rather than the actual uses, uh, which is it's quite a large number, um, eight million dollars for public use buildings. And I, I I I'm just curious as to what the explanation is for the components of the overall assessment.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Mayor, I can speak to the specifics, you know, line seven oh nine and eight fourteen, eight twenty. I can say that property tax assessment across the province is legislated under provincial legislation required to be on a market value assessment. So I could check the details of how we're breaking that assessment into different components. I think that there are uh, potentially, as you said, some different blocks there. Um, and you'll see if there are different municipal addresses reflected in that in the notice. But we are required to assess the value of the property as though it were, you know, what it would sell for on the open market. There's a couple of different ways to term that, I think council knows. Um, but essentially saying that the province, what we would recognize as the provincial building, you know, the the full big green building all the way to the corner uh, has a market value of seven point nine million dollars. Rings pretty true to me that if if somebody was gonna buy that, it probably wouldn't get it for less than like seven point nine dollars.
Right, thank you for that. Um, the observation that I I wish to make is that I I've supportive parts of Counselor Demoto's comments and Counselor um, Melnick, in that I, I think we should write this on on an annual basis, just to keep it current. I think we shouldn't just give up entirely, but despite the fact that I have on previous occasions um, gone into a bit of a rant about this on on the basis of principle, not on the basis of amount. I think at long last, our voice has been heard, and I I think our local voice, that is, with our colleagues in Manford, Canmore, and I, I returned to um, the visit recently by the premier to the community. And I I did take an opportunity to chat with her, and I was there for um, her remarks over the week ago. Their votes. Um, she said at that time, I'm speaking about destination tourism communities, you know, for Jasper, that Canmore. She said, if we're going to support more traffic coming to these communities, they're going to need the dollars to be able to support that extra traffic. Thirty-two dollars or thirty-two thousand dollars is not the dollars we need. We have calculated that thirty-two percent of our budget goes toward visitor-facing services and infrastructure. And that amounts to six and a half million dollars. Um, and we have now a premier saying that if we're going to support more traffic coming to these communities, which they are, and again, we heard a reminder that we want to build a tourism economy from ten billion to twenty-five billion, um, those communities are going to need the dollars to be able to support them. Um, she said later in a conversation with me, if we need to develop some new funding framework to be able to support our resort communities, I'd be very interested in asking our tourism and sport minister to look into that. We're having those discussions now with the Minister of Tourism and Sport. And as Counselor Demoto said, um, in discussion is the prospect of of real dollars. Thirty-two thousand dollars won't change anything when we're, when we're spending six and a half million dollars and um, to to support visitors coming to our community. So I am inclined, although I I still rankle at um, the principle. Um, this is the only property owner that gets to decide that they want to pay the property taxes. And it's not necessarily that we lose money. We can collect it, but everybody else has to contribute the share that would otherwise have been paid. So in principle, I I agree that it's wrong, but as a strategic matter, I think we are better served in pursuing the comments made by the premier in the last ten days or so and focusing on on change that will really impact our community and not worry so much about the thirty-two thousand. But leave it on the books and come back to it annually because things, things do change um, on a regular basis. Those are my comments. If somebody's interested in making a motion.
Counselor Demoto?
I am sure you're making.
Counselor, Counselor Paul, you're good? Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, I just, on top of that, I I also agree in principle that uh, you know, it should be the reverse process, and it it should have never gone this way. Um, and thank you for acknowledging that and sharing that information with us, worship. Um, I think that we're getting a really good deal on the rent there anyway, when it comes to commercial space in the downtown core and what we're actually paying for. So overall, um, I think that uh, you know, it's still helping the the community out at a minimal cost. Um, but I would also like to to move that committee recommend council direct administration to write off property tax receivables for the roll, um, is it five hundred thousand provincial building? In brackets, uh, for half the amount levied in the amount of thirty-two thousand uh, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand twenty-three cents. Six hundred and seventy-eight hundred and twenty-three cents.
Thank you for your motion. Uh, councillors, any further questions? Debate. I'll call the question all in favor. They're not opposed, that motion carries. Moving on, uh, to item seven point five Transit Fleet Facility Procurement.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. Uh, so administration is here uh, in follow-up to the twenty twenty-four budget discussion where uh, council directed administration to bring additional information forward on any transit-related capital items prior to initiating procurement processes. Uh, so this is the first of those reports specifically focused on the Transit Fleet Facility. Um, I know council has discussed uh, transit extensively, and so I'm, I will go through the report. I'll try not to go through too much detail. Um, but certainly do want to make sure that all the facts are available to council and the community through the discussion. Um, so the history of considering transit in Jasper stretches all the way back to the twenty-eleven Jasper Community Sustainability Plan. Don't worry, I'm not gonna go that far back or through all of the intervening years. Um, but I will note that uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, council uh, received uh, the Transportation Strategy and Action Plan, which really set the stage for the launch of Jasper Transit uh, on in September of twenty twenty-three. Uh, at the twenty twenty-four budget discussion last fall, uh, council uh, saw a presentation on capital of capital items that included a number of items related to transit. Um, and uh, the plan was approved, as I said, with council providing direction to administration that we were, should come forward to council with additional information before proceeding to procurement. Uh, in order to ensure that we are as ready as possible, uh, administration undertook a uh, scoping study to consider the details of a potential transit hub or fleet facility, um, including identifying a suitable site, providing concept design, and a detailed scope that would enable us to support future RFP. That scoping study is attached to the report here for council and the public. The development of Jasper's transit system to date has been in alignment with the recommendations of the twenty twenty-three transportation strategy that I referenced before. Uh, we started with a three-year turnkey contract for operation while the municipality pursued capital grants for fleet and facilities. That was a specific uh, recommendation or approach that was identified in the plan, uh, and that's how we've operated uh, so far. It's been uh, gratifying to see that the system's ridership has actually uh, exceeded the projections set out in the strategy. Uh, the strategy did look out to twenty twenty-six, considered ridership potential uh, and revenues and expenses for the system. Uh, in the strategy, uh, it identified that that we might expect fifteen thousand riders over the last six months of twenty twenty-three in the initial year of operation of the system. And in fact, uh, the system, starting in September, only operated for four months and saw over fifteen thousand riders. So uh, we're seeing an average of thirty-seven hundred, over thirty-seven hundred riders a month. Uh, in actuals, where the prediction was twenty-five hundred riders per month. So that that's gratifying to see, and I think provides a good, good case uh, looking forward. The municipality uh, has applied for grants to be able to support transit capital items. We certainly look to bring in as much external funding for municipal projects as possible. Ideally trying to utilize provincial or federal dollars wherever possible to offset costs that would come to uh, residents and businesses of the municipality. Uh, administration did apply for uh, funding under a federal transit capital program, and we were approved for a maximum of five million dollars uh, towards uh, six point two million dollars in capital projects. So uh, just about eighty percent of the capital projects that are proposed in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five uh, would be covered by the federal capital grant. Uh, the report contains a detailed breakdown of the items that were shown. Report contains a detailed breakdown of the items that were shown in the twenty-twenty-four capital budget, uh, as well as their funding sources. Um, and so you can see the breakdown of all of the different items. I think uh, the discussion was often mean about. The total dollar value being for a transit facility, when in fact, the six point two million dollars. Uh, it will support the development of the e-bike sharing fleet, uh, even charging stations. Transit fleet facility design, construction, um, the purchase of three buses, uh, as well as transit stop improvements. And bus charging infrastructure. So there's actually a whole host of uh, related items that are being able to be supported under that grant program. Um, specific to the fleet facility construction, uh, you can see that that item uh, is, in our grant application was estimated at. Just over three point six million dollars. Um, and that's inclusive, uh, that's exclusive of charging infrastructure, which is the bottom line, uh, and would be uh, an item looking forward with bus purchases. It's expected that the useful life of a transit fleet facility would be thirty-plus years. Um, and despite that, uh, administration is proposing um, any borrowing related to the food facility, uh, which is estimated to be. Seven hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we're essentially suggesting that that's a small enough amount that the mortgage could be spread over a very short period of time, five years. That would result in annual payments of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars per year for five years and a total cost of borrowing of. Eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and change. So the intention of uh, bringing forward the fleet facility as the first capital item is obviously due to construction, it is the longest lead time item. In order for us to have a facility uh, in place in time for our buses to arrive and park snugly inside the facility, we need to start early. Uh, on the construction and development of that facility. Uh, indoor fleet facilities, uh, as council will no doubt appreciate from our past winter, play a really crucial role in enhancing the operational efficiency and longevity of transit fleet. Providing that sheltered environment ensures that we can protect the vehicles from the wear and tear of being stored outside in variable weather. As well as reducing the risk of downtime due to inclement weather. Obviously, that's been a matter of discussion at the council tables we saw during our extreme cold snap, where it really was difficult. Uh, to keep our vehicles in service. And that would have been able to be prevented, how our vehicles have been stored inside. So we certainly want to ensure that we uh, maintain that strong state of readiness to be able to ensure that we can serve all of our transit customers as best as possible. And that's the intent of the transit fleet facility. The estimated costs associated with the facility include that five years of loan repayment that I referenced, of just over a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars per year for five years. Uh, administration is also forecasting, again, this is contained in twenty-twenty-four and beyond budget assumptions, thirty-five thousand dollars per year of facility operational costs. And uh, administration is further uh, recognizing that. When we have fleet. We have our own buses, then we will need to start to contribute to reserve for future replacement of those buses. Uh, we have included that in our budget projections and expectations and we're targeting that at approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars per year. Uh, starting at a lower number in twenty-twenty-five and then increasing thereafter. Uh, so for the first five years, administration expects the uh, costs associated with the transit facility and buses. To be approximately two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for the first five years. After the mortgage on the fleet facility drops off, uh, the cost associated with ownership of those assets is approximately ninety-two thousand dollars per year. This can be contrasted with savings that would. The municipality would be able to realize from being the owner of those assets rather than renter of those assets. Uh, the way our current contract for operation is structured, the municipality pays a total cost per service hour. Um, and for that payment, the contractor provides the buses, the drivers, the storage at their cost, maintenance at their cost, everything else. The municipality uh, really only pays for the fuel on top of that, which again is a matter of discussion, council previously. Um. So obviously that hourly cost charged to us by the contractor. Needs to reflect their total cost, uh, including storage and provision of buses. Um, we have worked with them and uh, have been able to make an estimate of the savings associated with municipality only its own fleet. Administration believes that's approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year reduction that we would see in the cost of our contracted services. So you can see that for the first five years, we pay. About forty thousand dollars more. Than we are paying now. And that would be reflective of us, us having a facility that would have a length of thirty years. After the first five years after we've paid off the mortgage on the, the bus barn. Um, we would be uh, net positive, you know, at overall reduction of the total cost of contract. I also wanna reference that uh, the transit strategy and action plan. Uh, acknowledged and, and I think actually recommended that on a go-forward basis, even when the municipality. And our gift to municipality is to own its own fleet and facilities, that it should continue to contract out the operation. So I think that that may, because that is uh, a number of years in the future and a decision that has yet to be made by, by council. Uh, administration certainly is working under the assumption that, while we may. Uh, move forward with becoming an owner of these assets. That it is most likely on an ongoing basis that we will continue to contract out to someone to drive the buses. In essence, um, and so administration is certainly working under that, that assumption, uh, and there are no plans. Uh, to in-house the operation of the, you know, the driving. Um, so at the conclusion of this three-year contract, uh, we have fleet and facilities in place. Uh, we would be able to issue a request for proposals for straight operation and maintenance of the buses that we hold. Uh, and that would enable us again to see that reduction. But just I want to provide that clarity that there is a sense that the. Um, administration is attempting to uh, expand the municipal human resources that are involved in this. Uh, there has always been an understanding that there are, are lots of parties that have expertise in operational buses. And so that's been built into the plan from the start. Uh, so the uh, details of the proposed fleet facility are contained in the package. I'd be happy to answer questions. It is a fairly technical document, really intended to say, okay. When the municipality goes out to the market for bidders. What are the specifics that you should be putting forward? So it is the, you know, what are our design requirements that we would incorporate into a future request for proposals? Uh, so I won't go through each and every uh, portion, but you can see in the building design summary, it speaks to the details of the structure and size, the. Materials in the building envelope, uh, the materials in the interiors, mechanical and electrical systems. Um, and then site landscaping, stormy condition and so on. So uh, administration is recommending that council approve, moving forward, issuing a request for proposals. Uh, through our public procurement processes. At the conclusion of that uh, posting period. Um, where interested bidders could submit uh, proposals. Uh, administration would return to council for final approval to move forward with construction. Uh, in summary, the proposed. Facility offers uh, an asset with a useful lifespan that greatly exceeds the proposed five-year mortgage or loan term. And the indoor storage of asset part. Buses offer significant operational benefits for the transit system operation, uh, including better system reliability and. Ultimately significant savings in terms of future operation costs. Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'm happy to answer any questions about the RFD uh, or about the study.
Thank you for that. Uh, councillors, questions? Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Mr. Given. Um, our power stability, have we done the study on whether like we're at the end of the line? And um, this facility um, to house the buses. Would be able to sustain this with the current power, the grid that we have in Jasper?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, to councillor Calhoun, so in terms of the specific site. Uh, there is adequate power service to the site for this demand and draw. I think the broader discussion of your, you know, the broader question you're asking is. Uh, about Jasper's overall stability of, of power to. The community. And I think that this site would have the same challenges as any part of the municipality in that we are connected by that umbilical cord. Back to the rest of the British public. And I think that's fair to say, but the specific site that is identified here is uh, fully serviced with the required.
Marilyn?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to. Mister Given. The request for decision, the graph that's in there indicates a price for the facility of. Three point six three million dollars. Um, in the document from Metaphor. Um. They say that one of the project goals is to stay within. The four and a half million dollar budget, but. What is the difference between those two numbers?
Your worship, uh, that is conclusive of contingencies, uh, site development costs, contractor overhead and a number of other items. Um, also, there was some discussion whether we should be including the charging infrastructure as a part of the facility itself, or whether we do that with buses. Based on the advice that we've received from the transit operators, the suggestion is that the, the charging infrastructure should be aligned with the, the buses. That we don't get your bus manufacturer and your charging manufacturer uh. In this kind of, you know, uh, having disagreements. Um, but in terms of the details of the construction, sorry, Worship. Um, the class D cost estimate, it is direct construction costs of just over three million dollars, which itself is inclusive of four hundred thousand dollar contingency. Um, there are other associated costs, uh, including, as I said, direct overhead, site development costs of predicted to be one point three million dollars. So we are in that. Um. Four point three million dollar range at this class D cost estimate. Inclusive of a four hundred thousand dollar contingency. So we're, we are right on that target of three point six. The three point six number that you see in the table is the number that we developed in. Twenty twenty. Early twenty twenty-three for submission. So it was not even the fastest, it was pretty high level.
I also note um, the reference to. The design of the building, um, both the. The positioning of it to maximize um, a slope to get maximum exposure to the sun and building it to. Be able to accommodate. Solar in future. Have we looked at any opportunities to incorporate those aspects on the bill? Are there any other grants for? Or solar, I mean, it's so well-designed and it seems to me the time to, to do that is initial construction, not. Not downstream now in order to maximize. Benefits. Um. And one of the things I, I considered is that, although the request for decision references. Policy B one twenty, which is procurement, we have another policy, um, B zero one zero. Sustainable purchasing, which includes contracts and commits us to. Sustainability in, in design and building. Seems to me that our own policy. Impels us to look at maximizing sustainable opportunities at this building. Like, I'm just interested in things like. Heat pumps and, and so forth. We, we heard earlier today. Climate resilience about the need for. Potentially large-scale cooling, cooling venues, a building like this, um. Could be a cooling center if needed. Um, it's a hundred degrees out. Not good for the buses to be parked outside, but might be better for people to be inside if they had to be. Um, similarly, we need another reception center as we experienced last May with Edson and residents of the. The county coming here. This would be something that. Could serve other purposes, but it has to be designed um, to be able to keep people cool. In the hot weather when the town moves on. I'm just interested in those design aspects and whether we could. Um, build more sustainability and more multipurpose into this from the beginning rather than just planned for the future.
Um, Deputy Mayor Wilson for Maryland. Maybe I'll start with the last comment first before moving on to the, the concept of solar. Um. I, I think really uh, the most direct nonsense is. I can't imagine Sarah, where administration would recommend putting members of the public in a facility uh, in this, in this location. Uh, because uh, in. You know, it is a part of the municipality's operational yard where we have heavy equipment moving back and forth. And so, you know, really would be appropriate for that. We have much better venues. First of all, the arena. Um, and so, uh, so I. I appreciate the line of thinking and certainly appreciate, you know, multipurpose nature. And this building is intended to be multipurpose in that. There's no uh, barcode scanner that only allows in buses. Uh, certainly we have a, a significant amount of other municipal equipment that would. See the same benefit from interior storage. Uh, so on an interim basis. While our transit fleet is developing, uh, certainly the building is multipurpose in that it can provide protection from the elements for a wide variety of municipal fleet vehicles and equipment. So uh, so I'll say that that would be the primary focus in terms of multifunction. You will see under item five point six uh, electrical system summary in the uh, scoping study. That there are specific references to uh, ensuring that the main distribution board is oversized to allow for solar PV. Um, and potential future owner supply, BESS is uh, battery energy storage systems. So uh, the building. Uh, is intentionally, you know, within the construction building is intentionally being plumbed. To be able to incorporate both bad onsite battery storage and solar uh, installation. There are often ongoing grants for those types of items. Um, but administration isn't recommending that they be incorporated in this initial, because our, you know, our core purpose here is to ensure that we have a place to, to park fleet. Um, inside of the elements. And administration would agree that we need to increase the resilience of this system. In the future, uh, as I think all Jasper would benefit from by having uh, more onsite energy generation and that's reflected in this, we know. Uh, just additionally, I would say that uh, this council may be aware, um, that administration has undertaken a. Uh, solar feasibility study at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so you know, there are other separate items that have the ability to improve the municipality's. Uh, corporate energy resiliency. Um. But administration is reflecting here, but certainly it is a, a line of thinking because there are, as. We talked about the climate resilience, I see so many plans and items that are starting to come forward and say that. The municipality, the community needs to have more resilient supply of energy. More localized energy generation and more localized storage of energy. Those are all things that a number of documents are pointing to. The intent of this facility is that would be designed to be able to incorporate those facilities um, as budget funds or grants would.
Councillor Demora?
Thank you. Um. I'm not sure uh, when a motion will come forward after some discussion. And I think regardless of where we go, whether it's uh, you know. There's a desire to uh, ad- adopt what's uh, been in front of us or uh, to have some direction for um. A revision. But I think. For me, especially because the community is only at the weekend or maybe just start now to, to review some of this and give us feedback. Uh, I would like to go and I think keeping us in line better with the MGA regardless of what our policy says. That uh, I would like to encourage the committee uh, recommend to council, the council direct administration. In a direction. So that gives us another week to the, the regular meeting. And I think puts us more on side with um, process in my mind. On uh, making advancements uh, that will have some type of financial impact. That's just my opinion. The other point I want to make is, um, have we done enough research with uh, local business on the e-bike? And e-sharing, is there an opportunity for uh, local business to, to be involved in that? Because um, I would like to take a phased approach in adopting uh, transit in our community and not completely going away from fossil fuels. Going away from fossil fuels and maybe put some of that money in towards, um, the future, uh. Possibility of having that external sort of storage, uh, outside of the building that, uh, for that cover. Uh, and then maybe, uh, resource the e-bike program to a local business if that's possible. That's just another opinion. Um, and then. As far as contracting drivers and 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 maybe fossil fuel or gas powered, uh, buses. I was thinking that we don't go and put a request for proposals on to have, uh, a plumbing business or an electrical company back up any of our. You know, existing operations and stuff, and and I think that we have an opportunity here to maybe take the same process and go, okay. Well, we have a local business that supplies, uh, these types of things that does have backup vehicles. Maybe we don't have to buy our own. Gas vehicles to have as a backup or as part of the whole system. So I I would like to explore that. And then, um, yeah, I just, I have some other requests or questions on like where we're going to repair these. Electric buses once they come here and and what then process might be involved with that too. So I guess, uh, aside from those comments, I guess, uh. Do we have, is there a plan to to where these things, do we know where electric buses and electric vehicles get repaired these days?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Council of Us. So I I do want to, I will answer that question, Council of Us about the direction. Uh, but I do want to ensure that council is aware that. You can expect to receive similar reports on every one of the capital components that are referenced here in the table. My council has given that direction that proceeding with any of these cap items, we need to come back to council. So we certainly would do a more detailed report on. Uh, the e-bike fleet concept, um, and the and buses. So you can expect to see a report with similar level of detail, but focused on each of those areas. This report is exclusive to that long lead item of the transit fleet facility, which is going to take some time with development permitting, construction. And that's why it's the one that's here first in the subject of the conversation. With respect to, uh. Future, uh. Electric bus repair. Um, typical approach with, uh, municipally owned fleets is that the municipality would be responsible for. Uh, minor maintenance and repairs and house, and we certainly have some mechanics that would be capable of doing those sort of things. With respect to major repairs or specialized service, it is also quite typical. Under that your contracted operator is responsible for that. Uh, and those would be the types of considerations that we would put in, uh, a future procurement for the buses, uh. Similar to this, uh, report, council would expect to see sort of the scope. Of requirements that administration would put forward to the market in terms of availability of, um, of repair. You know, at a, at a high level, uh, we would want to ensure that there's localized repair to Alberta, uh, you know, even for. Uh, large transit buses, there's, there are no large transit bus manufacturers or dealerships located in Jasper. Uh, so so we would be facing that the same, the same way. Certainly, there would be more. Mechanics in the local area that would have experience with large diesel vehicles, but no transit buses per se. The, uh, so those types of details would be something that we would include in the procurement and evaluation of. Uh, electric bus options, you know, when we go to the market, we'll say. What is your availability of, uh, repair parts, um, demonstrate your past history? Uh, administration, uh, would also consider. Other municipalities in the province that have similar buses. So we'd want to, you know. There are many unique bus manufacturers, uh, out there, and it seems like there can be startups popping up here and there. Uh, my advice, certainly at this stage, would be that Jasper would be better served to, uh. Consider if there are all of the suppliers that are already supplying in the Alberta markets that we can, you know, rather than being the one, the only bus. Of that manufacturer in the province, we'd be better to be one of hundreds of buses from manufacturer. So that would be a consideration or some of the types of consideration you expect to see in a procurement, uh, scoping document like this. Focus on transit. But again, today we're really focused on that fleet facility.
Counselor Kellerman.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, you know, Wilson through you to Mr. Given. Um, so we're assuming that this building is three point six to four point two and it's a class D. Um, I had a very nice tour of the. Recreation center on Saturday, and we saw the original sign that said this project is costing ten million. Now the new signs is for costing twenty point five million. So, um. What's the guarantees that we're not going to be sitting for two months from now when they, uh. They come back and say that this building is going to be ten million.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, ha- happy to speak to that because, uh, there is no guarantee that after we go to the market that this price will be the same. And the activity center renovation project is. Continues to be on budget with the budget that was approved by council. So after we went to market, council said, okay, this is the scope that we want to have. We're willing to accept this number that came forward from the market, and we are still on that budget. So, you know, I think that's really important for the community to understand. We're not over budget on the active descent renovation. We continue to be within the budget that was approved by council. This item has a, uh, budget number that is essentially placeholder that's reflected in the capital plan. After we go to market with an RFP is when we'll know what the market cost of this facility is, and it may be different from what's in our placeholder of the capital plan. Uh, and at that time, council would have the ability to determine whether that was acceptable or not. Um, certainly administrations, uh. Driving desire, um, and our imperative is to ensure that once council approves a budget that we stick within it. Um, and that any construction projects are completed within that budget.
Yeah, and to add to that, I I think too, um. Uh, there's another check stop ahead of us. You know, we go out to market, we get pricing. You come back to council and we say, you know, uh. We're, we're not happy with that. It's too much. We're not going ahead. Um, but but again, this is new construction. I would suspect a class D estimate to be. A fair amount more accurate than, uh, major renovation of a nineteen eighties building, hopefully. Um, so fairness for us, but again, there is another check stop ahead of us, and there's many. So, um. That's why I'm not too reluctant in moving forward at this point because. We will see this come back to us, uh, but we won't have any progress unless we know what something like this is going to cost us in. Upon the open market. Uh, Counselor Demora, oh, sorry, Counselor Hall, and then.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. That was along the lines of my questioning as well of, uh, this price, and I think. With our activity center renovation, the ten million dollar price taken in before COVID was huge inflation. In those, was it before? I I'm pretty sure it was before twenty twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen. Um, it was huge inflation in those times, and I I'm just wondering, uh, CEO Given, have you. Is it, is inflation still, uh. Doubling every night or is it, or is it slowed down a bit since the 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 big inflation after the pandemic?
But might seem like inflation is doubling every night on cereal, but, uh, I I think, you know, the the most recent estimates from, well, most recent numbers from the bank account show inflation slowing. Um, I think within the last week, they released numbers and said that it was, um, below three percent per year, and they're sort of most really recent. Maybe to do those assessments quarterly. Um, so it was, you know, on the high side of two, but the bank account's target rate is two percent annual inflation. So, um, under three is is certainly trending in the right direction. Um, so we see that cooling. Um, but I I think it's completely fair to say that the municipality doesn't know for certainty what the cost of this project will be. We we really only will know that when we go to the market and say. Give us a, your fixed price, your best fixed price to build what we proposed here. Um, and, uh, we hopefully will receive lots of market interest in that. Um, administration has taken steps to ensure that the building is as constructable as possible by ensuring that it's it's quite simple. Um, uh, it is also intended to be a pre-engineered building. So designed offsite, fabricated offsite, and assembled, you know, uh, fairly quickly. Um, and we've provided a, a, a very high, you know, I think a reasonably high level of detail for any potential interested builders. So we should give, you know. I will be very confident, uh, that the price that comes forward from market, the council would have to see, review, and ultimately approve. Uh, that that will be, uh, that will be the price of the building, you know, that we would.
Counselor Moore.
Well, I'm starting to warm up to this overall project. Um, there are some things that I'm still against, um. But, you know, I I think that if we get ahead of the message, instead of being behind the the eight ball, uh, a few times. Uh, there's some sentiment in the community about this council spending. I'm glad that we, you know, we had to bite down and do some of the stuff at the activity center, and I I think the future, um. Usage of that will will benefit the community as a whole, and I think that, you know, an expanded transit system like this. Will help the community and people visiting here, and, um, I do have some objections on, um, some of the process. But, um, I I would like to emphasize that I. From what Mr. Wilson said earlier about the investment to the return on investment, what. The community investment might be for what we're actually getting or what Jasper as a whole, like, and I'm not just talking about the town, but. You know, the the park and the visitors here. Um, there are a lot of factors. We heard some of it in the, uh, the climate. Discussion this morning, but I think those approaches in the messaging are really important, and I think that, well, a ten percent investment for. For something that we're going to get, that's, it's going to be, you know, helpful. Uh, with a lot of grant money is something to to take advantage of, and I I think that, you know, uh, a mitigated approach to this process. Is important. Um, I don't think that going to. Direct administration today. Is going to expedite anything if we wait a week, and I'd I'd like to hear more feedback from the community if there's going to be any on this particular. Thing now that it's out there. I know that there was some traffic on social media over the weekend, and, uh. That might spur some further discussion. I'd like to hear back a little bit more from the community while we. Have marching orders for an RFP.
And have Counselor Waxer and then Counselor Hall.
I think that we're in the early days of, uh, as a society of wrapping our heads around the fact, the days of driving around. Uh, separately, uh, on, um, on fossil fuels is coming to an end. I think we're, it's still early. And, uh, so for many, the, um, moving forward on this decision may appear to be controversial. However, right now we have the five million dollars in hand to continue the journey toward having a robust, uh. Public transit system, and in years to come, we may not, and as, and. People may be more comfortable with the idea in four or five years, but we may not have that money at that point. And so I think it's, uh, as difficult as it might be, I think, um, we need to show leadership by moving forward. Now that we have the, uh, the twenty cent dollars to, uh, to start on this process.
Oh, Ralph, do you mind just before I, you, I'll pass it off to you and then we'll go back to, uh, Counselor Hall. Um, but quick. Question on that, um, topic is that. Is it a ratio? Like, uh, the grant money, is it a ratio or, you know, if we scale back, you know, a whole bunch of places? Can we just use the five million and not, you know, is it, how, what, what's the parameters of this, uh? Of the money and not to say that I support that. I just wanted to, you know. We're getting a really good deal the way it is. Could we make it even a better deal, uh, with, you know, scaling back development or? Uh, you know, just interested in them.
Yeah, so, uh, under the program that the municipality applied this money, uh, it has two different streams. Um, the one that we applied for offers up to, uh, five million dollars to support specifically zero emission transit solutions. Um, and that's the one that we received, uh, the same program would only commit up to three million dollars. Uh, for for general transit solutions, you know, for 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 municipality like ours that was wishing to introduce transit. Uh, and and build the same sort of stuff. Um, so it'd be two million dollars less, uh, if we were going with, uh, with a different type. We did not apply for that other program, uh, we have applied under one stream, so, uh, it would be, I think, a significant change. Uh, we may be able to go back to the funder, um. But I think you, so I I can't answer that, uh, but I can say that we applied under the one program, uh, that was specific to zero emission, uh, and. That's the one that said five million. So, um, I think the best case, if we were to change course, would be that we would no longer receive five million, we'd receive three million. That's, and then there's a bit of a question of if the founder would be able to support that because it is kind of an interior change to the intent.
Yeah, no, my question was more towards, uh. Do we have to, you know, how much do we have, you know, are we required to have twenty percent in or, you know?
Yeah, so the the municipality is required, you know, does, uh, program maxes eighty percent of, uh, total funding for the program. If the fleet facility came forward, uh, at a cost that, uh, was higher than. Than budgeted or that council is willing to accept, um, one approach may be to reduce the size of the facility to leave more room for future expansion as. Uh, council can see in the package, uh, it is, uh, scoped. In a way that shows space, interior space for up to six buses. Um, you know, I think we can certainly develop the RFP in a way that said, okay, well, if a. You know, I don't know that cost per square foot benefit or, you know, that we'd have from chopping off one lane of buses, you know, so it could only accommodate. Uh, four at this time, um, but that's something that we could consider if if we was required. I mean, it's. A bit like the activity center renovation, really the the central discussion is what scope? You know, do we want to build a facility that can hold, uh, six buses at this time? Or do we only have money to build a facility to build four buses at this time? And that's something that's a reasonable discussion to have when we find out what the market costs are. Uh, and I believe that the, the, sort of, and the federal grant was not specific to what size of bus facility that we built. So I think that would be, you know, we'd still be able to retain the five of that, or if we reduce the scope of the facility in response to the pricing.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I, um. Just want to be clear that we're, uh, looking at a building, um. And we would allow for the additional roof. Support, um, to support a future solar power array. Um. If we were to choose not to do that, should we be pricing in, um. A roof that that would not support solar power. The reason I mention that is I'd like to know what the cost of the solar power would be five years from now. Because we're going to have to finance that to actually get the solar power. Right now we're getting a building. In anticipation, we will put solar power on it, but we don't know what the future cost at this point of that solar power would be. I think. That might help in deciding what type of building and size and whether that's the road we want to go, um. Great to do solar power, but if it's going to put the budget out by another million bucks. Um, I think it's important we know before we start building a building.
Yeah, so I think that the the added cost to the ability to support future solar would be minimal in terms of the scope of the overall project. Um, the building design summary in section five point one does a reference that roof loads need to accommodate future solar PV clamps. So really, I think it's talking about how it would be clamped to the structure of the roof, um, and to allow additional four pounds per square foot of additional weight. So, you know, I, I. I, you know, there's somebody at council that probably defer to whether there's, you know, any marginal difference, but my perception at least. Is that solar PV installations do not add a significant weight to roof roofs. Because we do see them installed on. Home builds from the nineteen seventies or earlier in Jasper. So I don't think that the structure needs to be particularly beefed up in order to support that. Um, the area where there may be some cost, again, I would suggest that it's probably not material to the overall cost of the project would be in the electrical systems. Uh, I mentioned that the main distribution board for electrical is intended to be oversized to allow for future, uh, solar PV. Or battery energy storage systems. Um, that's an area where there would be additional complexity and capacity. But again, I don't believe that those are items that would, uh. Have a material impact in sort of the cost of the, like, if those added more than ten thousand dollars, I would be surprised. Like, if those added more than $10,000, I would be surprised.
Counselor Hall, oh, would you like to follow? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, this has been in front of, well, not me, because I'm the only first term, but 2011 with the sustainability plan. It's, it's public transit is in there, I have it in front of me. I think this is new, a new initiative or idea. Um, and from what I would understanding, we're not, we're building a building that could down the road take solar panels. We're not bringing solar panels in yet. Um, and correct if I'm wrong, but if we move this to council next week, we're not moving anything here. We're just moving it to council. That would give residents another week to, because we can, we can change our minds next week. Like, this is not, we're just moving it to council. Is that correct?
So the, the report is, uh, the report is written in a way that is committee direct administration um because there is still that additional step. So the direction to administration would be to issue the request for proposals. So we would develop the RFP package. Uh, we would post that on the Alberta Purchasing Connection site, provide the local notices required under the council policy, and it'd be that period of four weeks or however long. Um, and then when we receive the responses, we would come back to council for approval to move forward or not. Um, and so there are no financial decisions being recommended here. So that's why the, the recommendation is the committee could direct administration. If council, uh, committee felt that it would be better to take that extra step, you know, obviously that one week uh change is not a not a material impact in the schedule, uh, and it could provide council more comfort. That's, you know, administration would understand, appreciate that, but legislatively, there's no expenditure of funds being moved here. Um, any expenditure of funds uh would only happen after uh the procurement process is completed and the results are presented to council for consideration.
Counselor Demond?
Thank you. All right, um, just a couple of things here. First, uh, number one is, um, so we've been approved up to $5 million. Uh, we don't have that in our bank right now. Just for this community clarification.
Absolutely. Deputy Mayor Wilson for Councilor, that's 100% correct. Uh, this program works on a reimbursement basis. So as the municipality uh expends dollars, uh, we can essentially make claims against the grants.
Okay, well, and unanticipated part of that question, and before I move to the second part, is that um where we sit with our uh with our debt limit, does that really, how does that affect it if we have to take out more to venture loan until we get payment from the government to do that? Are, are we stretching ourselves with our debt?
The amount of debt projected in the plan uh is within the municipality's debt limit. Uh, and I think what you're maybe asking, Counselor, is there any need for us to front money and borrow money until we get paid back from the grant? And the answer to that would be no. Um, as we incur expenses, basically as heavily invoiced, we can submit those to the funder and then be able to receive the funding. So I, I, administration doesn't foresee any need for the municipality to float expenses prior to being reimbursed. Um, if we did, um, the municipality has earned my arrival and for many, many years maintained the line of credit. Um, that's a typical part of municipal processes because all of our revenue typically comes, the majority of our revenue comes in at tax payment deadline, uh, but we have expenses early in the year. Um, so the municipality of Jasper, like a lot of municipalities, will maintain a line of credit to be able to float those types of things, and that's separate from our, our debt capacity.
Those are good, clear answers though, and I think that helps uh us understand and the community as well, people that are watching. Um, and the reason why I kind of want to bump this to, to council, just optics is a big thing too, regardless of what, you know, um, decisions on money that are being made. And I, I think that if given another week to, for community to mull this over for conversations to be had, we can get some information back and uh perhaps make some revisions to this. If we go ahead today, um, we're sending administration with marching orders to start the request for uh proposals process. So it's going to be out there and then, you know, for us to make any changes or any um things that emerge, um, we probably won't have any time to tweak that if the process is already started. So I would like to move that committee recommend council direct administration to issue the transit fleet facility request for proposals.
Please hear your motion. It's on the table, but I just wanted to confirm with counselors that they had no further questions for administration or with your motion. Is that okay? Counselors, the counselor, Kelly, yeah.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. To you, to Mr. Givern. Regarding the operation costs, we're putting 57,000 away a year for the replacement of bus. So we say over 10 years, um, we have to replace the bus. Uh, the buses are 2.2 million. So where are we getting the other 1.7? So we have three buses straight there.
The expect, Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Callahan, the, the expectation is that the municipality would be able to utilize future grants to be able to do that. So the municipality is putting away our portion of future expenditure, same as we would do for things like the fire truck. Uh, single ladder truck that we council is well aware of. It's a four-year lead time on delivery of that truck, and the cost is, I think, nearing $2 million. Um, municipality has not put $2 million aside to buy that truck, although we have been putting an amount aside. It really is that we can pay our portion, and we do rely on provincial and federal grants to be able to support the balance of that. And that's been the practice with large uh fleet vehicles separate from transit items. Uh, we see that as a example with the fire trucks, for example.
So we'd be using the sa- same CNS, let's see, um, Canadian tax dollar from the provincial governments that we use now for the fire trucks. So we just have more vehicles in competition with each other. Are you foreseeing that there's going to be electric vehicle grants still available?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Callahan, actually, uh, I'm foreseeing that there will be dedicated transit funding uh because the government of Canada has expressly, uh, explicitly stated that they're going to establish a permanent transit fund. They're currently in discussion right now about what the specifics of that transit fund will look like. My recollection is that they spoke about a $3 billion commitment over a number of years towards developing ongoing permanent dedicated funding for support of municipalities transit. So that would, so in terms of what administration is sort of planning towards, administration is planning towards Jasper having an existing transit system that would qualify for dedicated transit funding that would be separate from funding that we would use for things like fire trucks.
So if I'm seeing this clearly, then we're going to build transit system building. We're going to buy three buses. We're going to hire out the maintenance for those buses and the operation of those buses. So our operational time would really be just sustain the building and the replacement of the buses.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Callahan, yes, I, I think that's an accurate way to look at it. The intention is not for the municipality to hire a bunch of staff and have an additional operation expense of, of having that staffing overhead. That's, that would be included in the ongoing sort of operation cost. And so, uh, as I mentioned below in, in the report, that's where that estimation of the 215,000 reduction in our operating cost, because we'd have the assets uh in the future when we go to contract it for the operation maintenance of the buses, we'd be paying only for that sort of, that labor cost rather than labor plus asset cost.
So, so it's a third-party operator then is going to be responsible for maintaining the buses also?
The, well, first, I want to be clear that we're talking about a decision that is at the end of the current three-year contract. And so at that time, that council of the day and administration of the day will have some decisions to make about what approach they wish to have. Um, and what I wish they want to have is the contractor's responsibility. Um, and although it might be to my detriment about trying to really position this, that administration is focused on that, that ongoing basis as being contracted out. I can't for certain say that the council in the future will agree with me. Um, some future council might say, no, we absolutely want to have our own in-house transit set up. That's, there's that potential. So I just want to acknowledge that, that that's, that no decisions have been made because we are currently in a three-year contract. Um, when we bring in the uh, then we intend to uh complete that. Um, and then we would be able to move forward, uh, if council would be able to identify what their desired strategy would be. I believe that the lowest cost to the municipality will likely be operated contract, uh, the contracted operation, which would include the maintenance of the, the buses uh in some form. Again, the, the details of that, I can't speak to because we're talking about something that is, you know, more than two years ago.
I just, I'm just curious now why we wouldn't like look at maybe creating partnerships then with like a third-party contract uh to buy into this with municipality, like, you know, we might obtain the grant, put up capital. Um, are those type of partnerships not available through this granting program?
I'm, maybe Counselor Callahan could give me a little bit of a more sense of.
So I'm thinking like, you know, that'd be the third-party contractor now that does all of our busing, provide the busing, provide that maybe third-party contractor may be interested in uh up and build a facility and work with municipality that way. That we obtain the grant and go with that to put in the debt.
Uh, I see. So my understanding would be that the municipality would need to be the ongoing owner of the asset. So I'm not sure if there's anybody that would like to put in money, other than the government of Canada, that's interested in putting in money into an asset that they're not going to hold. Um, you know, so I, I think that there are, uh, you know, a wide variety of partnership opportunities available. Um, and as the municipality's transit system, people, also, we can look at, you know, unique ways of doing things. Um, under this federal capital grant program, uh, I think the intention is that the municipality would need to have some funds in that ultimately municipality would be the ultimate owner of the asset. If somebody else wanted to provide the municipality with its, uh, you know, with the, the 1.28 million dollars of money and still allow us to own the buses, own the facility, that would be a great deal. I would, I would take that at second. Um, so I would want to step up with that. I, I would need to confirm whether that would, well, actually, you know, I would suspect that the federal government doesn't care where the municipality gets the money. The federal government expects that the public entity will continue to own the assets.
Okay, counselors? Yeah, Counselor Hall, before, yeah, definitely.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there are any other conversation, I'm wondering if Counselor Demond, can you just re-read your, or re-speak your motion?
Yeah, that uh committee recommend council direct administration to issue the transit fleet facility request for proposals. And then if uh anything transpires within the week, if we want to make adjustments to that, we have the opportunity, get opportunity for feedback uh from the community. And I think optically, it's uh from what I've been hearing in the community, uh, we're getting accused of jumping to spending, and even though this isn't spending directly, uh, I think that taking a, just an extra week to get some information back from the community, if people do decide that they want to chime in or send letters or um contact us individually, it gets a, it's a good and pragmatic approach to, to this process.
Thank you for that. Any debate? Open motion? Uh, Veron.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I came this morning contemplating a similar motion, just to give the community time, but on reflection and hearing the discussion today, I cannot imagine what facts are going to come to light in the next week that would change anything. Um, there is in the request for decision, um, a transit capital plan, but that's all it is, is a plan. Um, it's, as you say, it's not to spend any money. What we're looking for is proof of the plan, proof of concept. And the only way we can do that is to send out a request for proposals and see what the market might say. Uh, until we get that, we, along with the rest of the community, are left wondering. There are many animals, but we see a plan, but we don't know what that plan is going to cost. From my perspective, uh, this is an investment. I think that the other Mr. Wilson made that comment this morning. It's an investment um in our environmental future. It was an investment in our economic future. It's an investment in parking, I think. It's an investment in social equity. The question is, what is this investment going to cost? And until we know, we can't make any of these decisions. We, we won't know what the impact is going to be on our debt limit until we know what the cost is going to be. And we won't know where we can make adjustments, as Counselor Melon indicated. We really need to pay for a more robust roof um for, for the military cells. Maybe yes, maybe no, but until we see some numbers, we're all just shooting in the dark. Um, I think, yes, absolutely. The community has a right to weigh in on this and we should be prepared to receive those comments, but until we can give them some facts upon which they can comment, we're not serving them and we're not serving ourselves. The best time to invest, they say, is yesterday. The second best time to invest is today. So I, I think we should move this forward, get some prices and then be entirely open with the community. It's got to come back to, to committee of the whole and then to council. This is simply getting the very information that I think you want the community to have so we can have the proper, informed, robust debate. So as I say, while I was initially implying to kick it down the, the road for a week, uh, I don't think it actually does benefit the community to do that. What benefits the community is facts which are publicly available on which we can base discussion and decision. So I'm inclined to vote against the motion and support a motion to go get um the test results from the market so we know where we stand and we can discuss that with the community.
Q? Any, any more debate?
Would you like to close? Yeah, if there's no more debate, um, I understand what the mayor's saying and um, your worship did come there to, to maybe contemplate that. We've heard from administration that uh there is no harm in waiting a week. It's not going to push anything back. And I'm saying, what's the rush then? So if we do have an opportunity to engage community, give them an opportunity to absorb a little bit more of this, because this is the first time they're seeing this type of report at this magnitude. Um, there is an alternative here that committee direct administration to revise thinking that there might be some revisions that came forth through council. If I have a few more days, or you do, or you do, or people in the community come up with an idea or something like, maybe you guys should be taking a look at this. I'd like to be open to that. So, um, again, pragmatic, and then the other thing is optics. And um, I don't want to, again, I mean, I've used the term several times and, and I've heard it since then. Sometimes there are a little tone deaf to, to what people in the community are saying. So I just, I'm just being pragmatic in my, so you can vote the way you want to vote. Just putting this forward based on all those things. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Demond, close. So uh, everybody understands the question. I'll call the question all in favor. There are three in favor, four uh against. Four against, the motion does not carry. Are there further motions arising? Veron.
I will move that committee direct administration to issue the transit fleet facility request or proposals. Did I say that right? I stumbled. To issue the transit fleet facility request for proposals.
Yes, I think that makes sense. A debate? Everybody understands the question. I'll call the question all in favor. There are four in favor, against, or three against, that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. That's that. Uh, thank you for that, uh, healthy conversation. We're moving on to side uh seven point six. Sorry, sorry. Go ahead, councillor Melin.
Thank you. Um, while we're on the transit. Topic. And we're looking at a facility. Um, if appropriate, is it possible to have an update? As to what steps have been done. For procuring buses. In other words, have we done the? Um, load factors that will need to be able to. Um, have a zero emission bus that'll work in temperatures like today and. What are the um, what are the processes that we're going through right now? Um, on the initial uh bus purchase, which will again probably come back to us for a request for decision.
Uh, so at at this time, administration really uh has done essentially. Um, background research. Uh, we haven't started the development of the spec that that we've put forward, other than, as you can see, the facility we're. Uh, proposing to build to be able to accommodate three to five foot buses nose to nose uh or nose to tail. And so uh that's the level of detail that we're at at this stage. Uh, we have, as I think I reported before. Uh, met with various bus manufacturers at the Canadian Urban Transit Association Conference in Edmonton uh in November. Uh, so we did a bit of uh scouting, uh, and. They're all pretty shiny, so we didn't kick, actually kick the tires, but you could say a little bit of tire. They didn't understand some of the technical uh considerations directly from manufacturers. Uh, we have had manufacturers inquiring when we're going to be releasing uh our RFP. Um, but the next step after, you know, our focus has been on the facility. The next step after would be to develop the detailed spec, similar to what you see for the facility. Uh, that we would. Uh, be able to put into an RFP for the transit buses, and council can expect to see us come back with those details. Um, so this time, uh, there has not been a significant amount of work on that because the facility has been the focus. That's it. He's the longest lead time now.
Thank you for that, and um. Yeah, while we have the request for proposal. Um, regarding the construction of the fleet facility, um. Would it be possible to get a cost estimate on? The. Uh, panels uh at this point? Um, or would that be from a separate supplier from the uh? I imagine it'd be separate supplier from the uh builder of the of the building, but it would be good to know what we'd be looking at. Down the road, um, regarding that aspect of future costs.
Uh, I can do some inquiries. Uh, we can go back to metaphor and see if they can identify what type of product they were referencing, and if they have any. Uh, estimates about that, you know, about that panel that uh that the incremental cost of sizing. Uh, to be able to accommodate future solar and battery storage. Uh, can certainly check and see. Uh, I would note that they're an architecture firm, not an engineering firm or an electrical firm, so um, you know. We'll see what level of detail we can get from them and link a match, and we can do that next week or so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing that up, and it's regarding timeline, um, because. You know, both the uh. Approval of um is uh RFP that was um or awarding of a. Of the R RFP. I think there might be uh a desire to to see some more information on, you know, the fleet before. We we approved the RFP. Would you think that that would be coming? You know, because, you know, if we give a go ahead on the. Facility, but then realize, oh. Buses are just astronomically too expensive, whatever it is, they they kind of hang on each other. Can we have those kind of come together, I guess?
Uh. I will say that that it'll be challenging. Administration certainly can work to uh. Bring forward the next report on transit capitals, specifically the buses. During the time when the. Fleet facility is out in the market, you know, open for proposals. That would be my goal. Uh, I would also say that it's myself and one other, we are manager of utilities uh doing this work uh in fairly detailed work. Um. The study that you see in front of you took. You know, three months or more to build um to get that level of detail, um. But as I said, we have done some pre-work, um. So, and I think that the scope of buses is relatively narrow, you know, it's clear that we're not looking at forty foot buses. Um, for a number of different reasons. Uh, so I think it, I think it's. I think it's possible for administration to bring forward a report on the scope for electric buses during the period while we have that facility, you know. So the council, when you're faced with a discussion about uh moving forward with actual construction or your certain facility. That you should have in hand information at this level of detail uh about the buses.
Thank you. Um, may I move on? Veron.
Thank you. I I apologize, but since we're still on. The former request for decision, it seems. I'm just wondering, um, mister, given whether when the request for proposals go out. Would it be possible for an interested third party to? Submit a proposal along the lines. Suggested by councillor Keller, anything that is. My proposal is that we enter into a private partnership, uh. Would that be precluded by the the request for proposals that is intended to go up?
I would have to. I'd have to look and see your worship. Um, the typical public-private partnership is, sorry, there's a. Few different models and and many different flavors. A common one is where the private. Provides the capital and the public essentially leases it over a long term. And, you know, over a twenty to thirty year time horizon, uh, I. I. Would be surprised if. That would fit under the current federal grant, but I certainly would see. Um, because really what we're talking about is a financial strategy at that point. I mean, if ultimately the municipality ends up. Retaining ownership of the asset, then maybe that's possible. Um. I think uh. A request for proposals is open to, you know, a wide variety of different approaches than any sort of opponent might wish to take. And if there was somebody who was willing to build and finance the facility. Um, at their cost and allow the municipality to own it. We certainly would be, you know, able to consider, open to considering that. I I can't. Off the cuff, I can't imagine why that would be precluded unless there's something in the federal regulations that would.
Thank you, that, and we've given direction to issue a request for the proposals tonight. Just on my end now, the council's work suggesting, from my perspective, it should be as. Broad and open immediately as possible, so that any point could not. Any conceivable plan that could advance our objectives, um. But not within. Um, a tight frame, we would need a broad and open. See where it is.
Yeah, um, well, we only have one. Yes, we can take a a break, but we do only have one more item. Uh. Councillors, a break for lunch, or can we just push on through? Let's take a five minute break for councillor Melin, and then we'll jump back here and. For all of us. Um, yeah, so we'll be back at twelve forty-five, and I don't think we're going to be at this too much.
Okay. Set a break in front of our.
Hey, welcome back, uh. Uh, twelve forty-five, uh, we're on, uh. Fundly business item seven point six sidewalk seating fees two thousand twenty-four. We have director De Don, uh, take us through this one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um. This report actually addresses three different items, so it comes as the sidewalk seating fees, but we're also talking about uh a rates and fees by law. As well as the business licensing fee for twenty twenty-four. Um, so. Starting at the beginning, I guess, um. The admini- administration had a chance to review the sidewalk seating fees in relation to uh the data that we now have on the twenty twenty-three paid parking program. And as outlined in the report. Um, if you take the amount that was generated in zone ten ten, which is the two hour parking downtown. And divide that by the number of stalls in the zone, uh, it gives us an amount of two thousand and seventy dollars in twenty twenty-three, so that's the. Income that was generated for each parking stall in the downtown zone in twenty twenty-three. And if we apply the twenty twenty-four rates that were just approved by council, that amount goes up to. Two thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars is the projected value of a parking stall in the downtown zone. And having that said, uh, the sidewalk seating fee for twenty twenty-three was uh uh one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So there's about a thousand dollars difference between uh the actual fee that we charged in twenty twenty-three and the potential value of a stall in twenty twenty-four. And recognizing that a thousand dollar increase is is a pretty big increase, uh, administration landed on that two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. For the value of a stall in twenty twenty-four. And most installations usually have between two or three stalls, so that uh gives you an idea of the impact that it would have on those businesses. Um, last year, we issued a number of five year permits, so that was largely based on the installation criteria in relation to our development permit with Parks Canada, and so the the. Physical installation itself being approved. But uh there are quite clear terms and conditions that say. Uh, payments have to be, has to be complete, and the terms and conditions have to be met, and the installation still has to meet the criteria, so there is a bit of an annual. Renewal process that those businesses will have to do to get their patios out again, but by and large, it should be. Pretty straightforward, as long as they keep the same format as the previous year. Um, so that is administration's recommendation is to um. Up the fee to twenty one fifty per stall for the entire season. Having that said, uh. How businesses may manage with that increase, or uh council may have some different opinions on where that goes, so that is here as a proposal for your consideration, and so that committee recommend council. Uh, approve an increase in the fee is is the first recommendation. And then our second recommendation is uh that committee direct administration to bring the proposed rates and fees by law for first and second reading at the next regular meeting. And um. I uh was checking to make sure that everyone was reading the agenda package and uh reading through the bylaw. There are a few errors. In the bylaw, and I apologize for the how draft the draft is. Uh, but essentially, it was just to get in front of you. An idea of what a bylaw could look like. So a rates and fees bylaw is something that we've been discussing for some time and something that we're missing. In terms of um being able to update our fees annually in a manner that is a bit more simple than going into each and every bylaw, finding the fees and updating them. So the bylaw attached, um. Reads like a rates and fees bylaw at the beginning, and then as you progress through it. Uh, reads more like an amending bylaw. So essentially, what we're proposing is that the amendments presented in section three of the bylaw. Um, affect respectively the commercial use of public space bylaw, which is where the sidewalk seating fees are set. As well as the business licensing bylaw, and this comes from a previous direction that council provided in twenty twenty-three. To increase the business licensing fee from a hundred and sixty-five dollars annually to a hundred and eighty-five dollars annually. We just need to implement that through a bylaw to change the fee, so that's why uh that item was included in here. And um. Passing that bylaw by the end of March is a requirement that we have to be able to charge that hundred and eighty-five for the twenty twenty-four. Uh, business licensing renewals. And then when I say that there's an error, uh, some of you might have picked up, there's a reference to municipal storage lots at the end of that bylaw, which was clearly an error, um. That was just a template I was working with, and uh that one slipped in there and shouldn't be there. But in essence, uh, this gives you the body of the bylaw and the amendments amendments themselves are. Are accurate, but before we come back for first and second reading at the next regular meeting, we would, of course. Uh, put a bit more time and attention to detail in that bylaw. Um. So there are a few different avenues. Council could. Uh, pick a different fee for the sidewalk seating fee. Uh, higher or lower, or you could maintain the current rates, and if that's the course of action that you select, then no action is required, as in. The sixteen fifty per stall is already included in the commercial use of public space bylaw. And then if you're uh uncomfortable with the principle of a rates and fees bylaws at this stage, you could just direct us to go and bring back the existing bylaws. For first and second reading, so the fees could be updated as we have in the past. Um, that's all I have. Happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Director De Don. Um, councillors, questions for. Sit down. Councillor Melin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I see in the verbiage in schedule A, we're talking about the use of parking lane twenty twenty-four and beyond. Which would indicate that um. That that fee would not change with the word or with those two words added and beyond. Um, for example, if we weren't to go with the twenty one fifty, but say a lower amount. I would still want to see the ability to. Increase the fee every year, uh, should we choose to. Um, the other item that I think we should probably look at while we're here anyway. Is the farmer's market fee per event. Just so we have a cost recovery for putting out the signs and picking them up. Right now, it's sixty dollars. I don't think we're. Recovering the cost of our labor, and we could probably easily change that. Um, fee, uh, if council was so inclined to.
Thank you, man. Uh, councillors, so. Mr. Don, are you coming on screen yet?
Thank you for paying attention to me on screen, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, to councillor Melnick's question about the and beyond, um, that was the wording that was included in the previous bylaw. And while I understand your concern, I think the thought there is that if you don't update the bylaw. Then if it says twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five or whatever the year may be, then then we would be, then we have to come back with that bylaw annually for. An update, which is a possibility, but having that and beyond in there gives us the opportunity to just leave it as is. And of course, council annually could decide to review that fee, and that's where that rates and fees bylaw really comes into play, where. You would review the one bylaw with a number of different fees, and it would be a much more straightforward process.
Councillor Demoto.
Well, there are a couple of things that I think I'd like to see, um, potentially based on the changes in this year's rates, and. I think uh handcuffing us to a certain amount like we did in the past. Um, I I don't feel that, you know, we had a really good number, but now we have good numbers to operate with. I feel that the people that have, um, you know, understood the contract, but uh signed on for five years, that we should take a phased up approach to. Uh, whatever future number it is to uh what that might be at the end of that. Uh, obligation. So uh I think that um. By, you know. Giving someone an increase pretty much over one season. Um, that could potentially mean a thousand dollars. Um. Is is a big jump, and I think conservatively on both sides uh to take an increased approach, anybody that's new that that might be coming on. You know, we'd have to consider that, but uh I would like to, you know, honor those that put in the commitment, the the cost of building. The the walkarounds and and other uh implementations that they've had to do for the business and and. Kind of help our businesses along um in a stage process as opposed to just a one direct thing. That was, that's just an idea.
Councillor Keller, be.
I agree with, thank you, Dr. Merrill, and I agree with councillor Demoto, like a thirty percent increase is a lot. To, I would say, like, you know, a ten percent pre-year over so many years to bring them up to where they should be. But I, you know, there's a lot of bigger restaurants that may be able to afford it, but we have a lot of smaller restaurants, and it's been a rough winter this year. Um, to put like is. Most restaurants have at least two stalls. Um, thirty percent is too much. I think, you know, like a ten percent, like two hundred. Dollar per year. Will be the way to go and to slowly bring them up, but um to. But um a thirty percent increase on them is too much.
Councillors.
Councillor Demoto. Yeah, I was just giving other people opportunity to speak if they wanted to. Um, I I do have a question on on some of the. The business licensing um at the end there, but I just wanted to maybe question. Um, through uh deputy mayor. Uh, to administration, do we have any instances, I I can't think off the top of my head, that are using sidewalk seating but still have the space. Uh, around like that are just paying for sidewalk seating and not a stall.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, for councillor Demoto, I believe the answer to that is yes. Uh, the first one that jumps to mind, uh. Is maybe past hotel, but I believe there are a couple of other instances where they are using sidewalk seating, um, sort of on it. And I believe that's charged on per seat fee rather than on, uh, the, the sort of first stall fee.
So those aren't being affected, uh, by the, the increase in the rates for the parking stalls themselves. That has no direct effect on, on the sidewalk seating itself.
That's correct.
Councillor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. This might be a question for Director Nidon. Since the implementation of this sidewalk seating project, have we seen? Numbers go down? Like, are there more restaurants that are using this or less, or is it about the same?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, through the councillor hall. I want to say it's about the same. I think we were expecting there would be a bit of a decrease when we. We went to permanent, uh, structures because the initial commitment to set up. Uh, either the boardwalk or the patio itself were, was a bit more of a commitment and the fees increased. So we figured that might. Uh, reduce the number of patios that we have, but, uh, we have. Twenty odd, uh, permits issued with a total of forty stalls. Uh, in utilization in the downtown core for the purpose of patios. And I want to say that's pretty consistent with what we saw during the initial years of COVID. And when we were, uh, running through a pilot project.
Councillor Demoto?
I guess, uh, another question that I have and, and I apologize if it's here and I missed it or don't understand it. Um. Do we have, how many? Businesses have made the commitment to purchase and build, um, infrastructure that are from year to year. As opposed to the ones that sign the multi-year contracts. And how many do we have year to year? Three years and five years, if those are the different stages, I believe.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, through the councillor Demoto, um. All applications are on a year-to-year or all installations, I should say, are on a year-to-year basis. Um, so every single permit that we issued last year in twenty twenty three is a five-year permit with the option to renew or not to renew. Uh, that's where the terms and conditions and annual renewal kicks in. And I believe we had two existing. Uh, installations that were approved in twenty twenty two under the previous program. Uh. The Raven Bistro is one of them. Coco's Cafe is another, where we issued three-year approvals in twenty twenty two. So last year was their second year. So this year would be the third year, their third and final year of being approved as is. And then next year they would then have to reapply and meet the current conditions, which. I mean, I would anticipate would remain the same as they are currently, but potentially they could change. Um, and that's where at the end of that multi-year process. If the rules are different, by the time you go to renew your application is where you could run into, uh, having to modify your installations. But having that said, the two that were approved last year. Are, if not already compliant or pretty close to compliance with, uh, the other standards. So I don't foresee a huge shift in, in those installations if the business owners choose to keep using them in the future.
Yeah, so I, do you see where, where I'm going with that? I think there's a lot of layers here. And I think to get everybody up to the same level and to keep it as equal as possible and then finally. Level out the playing field that, at the end of the thing, um, or their contracts and just at least get everybody to the same stage. And then move forward from that, I think is the, the best approach. We've been hearing, uh, a lot about. You know, uh, attracting and retaining staff and the cost of goods and, and just the bottom lines getting eaten away. Utilities, taxes, everything just comes down. And, and there's a lot of pressure, especially on the smaller businesses to make it within the. You know, the, the five-month timeframe that they have, that's condensed to six weeks of like what I call the business gravy in Jasper. And, uh, I, I think to, to just slap on, um, you know, uh, jumps. Or, or higher increases, uh, I, I think is, is not helping. So, um, it's, it's not that I'm saying that we don't need the money and I'm not saying that we need it. But I, I think a mitigated, again, I'm using that term to get everybody to the same spot is, I think, the most, uh. Good approach for everybody.
Think we've entertained some numbers if you'd like.
Well, I think I'd like to, to see something come back to us with. That type of mitigated approach. I don't have the answers right now. Uh, but, you know, I'm, I'm definitely interested in, in having, um. Administration come back with a stage kind of process. Is that, is that too cumbersome to ask or do you?
It, it certainly isn't cumbersome, but I don't think we're going to get advice. It's different than what's in the report. Uh, you know, administration is already recommending a rate that is lower than what we see it, you know, based on the data that we have. Of the amount that could be, you know, obtained by just having those stalls as parking. So that the, the, if it was a purely revenue-based sort of discussion, the administration would say, don't have patio seating. Let's have it available for parking because we make more money. Obviously, that's not what we're recommending. And the administrative recommendation isn't to the full amount that we, you know, could derive from paid parking. So I think, uh, from an administrative perspective, uh, we thought that that was a mitigating approach. If council feels that a lower number is appropriate, it really is, I think, uh, you know, within your control to determine what that right lower number is. I don't know that, you know, the administration would say, oh, is it a hundred dollars lower than this, two hundred dollars lower, five hundred dollars lower? But really council can just determine and we'll refine them, making, uh, whatever number council chooses.
Go ahead, councillor.
Uh, just like the, the sidewalk seating itself, like the, the, the chairs that are actually on the sidewalk. And, um, the area that farmer's market uses, that's, it's based on certain things, but it's, it's, it's kind of community. Uh, revenue. So when I'm looking at what a stall is worth to the community, it's worth twenty six hundred dollars based on what we're able to. You know, in twenty twenty four, retrieve from that. So that's, that's what belongs to everybody. So if I'm a commercial person and I'm going to use those two spots, I think I should be paying the amount that. It's worth to the community as well because I'm a private user on public space. So I think eventually we have to get to that money or that revenue to, to what that stall is. Sure, maybe there's a, there's a business discount. I think that's a good idea. Uh. But I've always led from, from the beginning, what's that stall worth? And now we know what that stall is worth. And I'd like to get everybody. Within, when their contracts are inspired to what an actual stall is worth, we might have another increase on. Paid parking. We don't know that. That could be an ex-councillor. We could decide that as a group next year. Um. I think that the best approach is. To get the value of that for the community. And have everybody. In an equitable process to get there. I don't know if that makes sense. I'm, I'm trying to, you know, build consensus. Within council to understand, I think, and maybe move towards that approach. I understand where administration's coming from and recommendation, which I think is, is pretty good so far, but I, I think we can make it better.
Just to clarify, I think anybody that has a current five, three or five-year approval, uh. They, they still have to pay the increase rate, whatever it is. So everybody's equal every year. But I do support, yeah, the incremental increase. I've not, I don't really support going right to twenty six or twenty one or whatever. So, yeah, I would support. Something.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, for the purpose of discussion that. Um, I would like to recommend or that committee recommend council approve increasing the sidewalk seating fee. For the use of, uh, a parking lane to eighteen hundred and fifty dollars in twenty twenty four. And two thousand and fifty dollars in twenty twenty five. And I hesitate to go beyond that because it's not within our term. And I think a future council should have the opportunity to be able to review the, uh, the rates.
Yeah. Thank you for that motion, the councillor's debate. Mayor, Mayor Hald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yeah, I. I'm appreciative of, of the approach and softening the law, but I'm thinking also on equity in general. And so councillor Demoto, you were, you were correct that it's private use for commercial purposes of public space. And not every business runs a restaurant. Many of them think they would benefit more from having additional parking stalls than walkarounds or seats. So instead, they get to subsidize their needs. Um, because this is a public asset and we're saying that for commercial purposes, you can have it as a discount. The general public residents, um, we now know what, what the value of the stall is and that comes into our tax. What comes into our revenues and notionally these can be used to offset taxes. Um, we have, and we heard this morning, um. Equity concerns from residents on Kiki who are. Impacted by commercial parking, uh, parking in a commercial zone. And we are saying, um, essentially, well. We're not going to make it better. In fact, we might make it worse and we're not going to charge those people as much as we could otherwise make for the community. By charging for that stall. The, the proposal that comes forward is still a discount of five hundred dollars annually per stall. It should be twenty six hundred dollars. Counsel or, or the administration has recommended twenty one hundred dollars. Yes, it is an increase, but, um, it's. It is justified. And if we charge less than that. It works in inequity to every other business in the commercial sector that. Doesn't have an option for patios, whether it's a second floor restaurant or, um, a retail business or some other business. They might much prefer to see the parking, both the revenue it creates for the community and for their own business prospects. So I, I'm challenged to see how, how we do equity. Um, I can understand pushing the low, but the proposal by administration, I think is quite heavily reasonable. It is still five hundred dollars less per stall. And that stall would otherwise, that's lost opportunity for the community generally. And it, it does benefit those who, who choose, um, to use the sidewalk for commercial purposes. So I, I am challenged to, to make it lower than it already is. And I would leave it on an annual basis. So it is still an evolving science to figure out the use of, or the, the value of a parking stall. It may change again. We'll have new numbers for, for next year. So I'd be content to set it for one year based on the recommendation. And look at it again next year.
Councillors? Councillor Demoto?
I may speak to the motion. Uh, I like it. Um, and the beauty of this is that. It's a recommendation of council to make a decision next week. And we might come up with a different number. We might come up with a different concept or, you know, how the mayor suggests, I, I think is. Very insightful and, you know, I, I didn't really put that into contemplation this time around, but we have discussed that before. It completely escaped me, right? When you talk about equity, uh, as a whole, from, from the, the business side. Um, in subsidizing their neighbors, I, I totally get that, especially when they're in, they're in a different market. So, uh, again, to move this forward to next week, I, I'm going to support the motion. Um, I might not agree with the numbers, but I like the idea. And, uh, I think, you know, it'll give, again, we might not get any feedback from anybody. But at the same time, it, it gives it a little time to, uh, to percolate in the community and within the businesses. And if somebody wants to say something, then they, they have that opportunity this week. So I think it's great.
Councillors, can we further? Councillor Melnick, the opportunity to close. Well, please decline. Everybody understand the question? Call the question. All in favor? Are, uh, six in favor, opposed? Uh, one opposed that motion carries. And we'll see that again, uh, next week. Uh, all right, moving on to motion action list, uh.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, sorry, excuse me, there was a, a second item. Uh, there was the first.
Oh, yeah.
Perspective, the, the rates. The second was really to the rates and fees by law for first and second reading. Uh, obviously there'd be some, uh, administrative updates, uh, councillor, our director Nidon noted, there are some adjustments to be made. Um, uh, and we also would include the, uh, newly revised direction from council, which could be revised in council. If, if council, but we do need that motion to refer it for first and second reading.
Okay, I'll look to council, councillor Demoto.
Again, I don't want to direct administration to be making any decisions, especially with financial, uh. Ratifications. Um, I wanted to bring up the, the discussion around, uh, a town. Uh, business licenses and, um, right now I think everybody pays a hundred and eighty five dollars. And I don't know if that's tiered, but could we, could we have a discussion if we're going to be setting rates of fees here on what? The amount of business licenses are, because we have something here for an increase of one eighty five. That's for local businesses, right?
So, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor, so our, our current structure of our business license by law is that all businesses, resident, non-resident. Pay the same fee. Uh, council previously gave directions that that fee should increase to one eighty five. Um, and we haven't taken the required legislative steps to enact that previous council direction. So that's what this is, is basically saying. You told us before that it should be one eighty five. In order to make that happen, we need to pass up an amendment by law. Um, and we're proposing to that through this fee rates and fees by law rather than amending the business license by law separately. Uh, council has also requested directed that the business licensing, um, strategy. Should be referred to the strategic planning session this, this week. And so that is an item that I think, uh. There's intended to be some discussion about the overall sort of intention of business licensing, the strategy and what approach, uh. Council would like administration to further research and come back to the table with. Um, because, uh, I believe Director Madon does have in her operational plan a review of the business licensing system. We're receiving guidance from, you know, what the scope of that review is before we really get started. So this is a very small sort of, we heard from council that we should update the fee. We need to take this administrative step and do that. And council has already set aside some time to discuss sort of broader issues around business licensing. And that'll be happening this week.
I appreciate the, the clarification on that. Thank you. Uh, and this is indicating that it would be coming for first, second reading on the fifth anyway. So, um, it would be council making that decision. So there's still time to, somebody wanted to change it. So, there we go. Thank you.
Any motions around? Councillor Axon?
That committee directed administration to bring the proposed rates and fees by law for the first and second reading at the March fifth regular council.
Thank you for that. Any debate? Motion? See none? I'll call the question. All in favor? She carries. Um, and that brings us to motion action list, uh, agenda item eight.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, having heard council's previous desire to, uh, to conclude our meeting, I'll, I'll be brief. You'll see in the attached motion action list, some areas under status where we're recommending that we, um, bump items forward. Uh, I'll say that generally this is, uh, either with respect to staff capacity, um, or where discussions are currently underway. Um, or where we're seeking some additional direction from council. Um, and so that's the first three items, uh, you know, energy improvement program. Minister of Energy Manager position is under recruitment. Uh, that will assist on that. And the Hope Music Festival. Council has also referred strategic planning appointments to boards and committees for some discussion. Uh, so that would enable administration to respond to that one. Habitat for the Arts, I know that, uh, director Reed has been in discussion with Habitat. And they're still coordinating the schedules to be able to have a deeper discussion about that. Um, I think administration would recommend that the paid parking correspondence item could come off. That was discussed here today. With the director Dung Dong's, uh, first report. Uh, and then also the Jasper Hotel Association. Uh, director Dung Dong referenced that's ongoing work that we're going to be doing with them. She has already had a discussion with the hotel association. Um, so we would suggest that item could come off. And then finally, the Crisis Team Jasper Society. The, that we, the item that's here is from January twenty third, we have received additional direction. Uh, so we can, uh, would recommend this item could come off to be replaced with that additional direction we received. Really. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Wilson, that's all that I have on motion action list. And we'd look for a motion for council to adopt the amendments as.
I'll take that motion.
Thank you for that. Before we make them, before they call that question, I just I'd like to highlight, unfortunately, that the Clean Energy Improvement Program, the request date was December 13th, 2022, and it has been pushed down the line numerous times. And so I don't have much faith that there's going to be anything deliverable on April 2023 because that's already passed as well. So we will not change that to 2024. But but also, you know, if we're not doing work on it, we might as well remove it, you know, and don't Yeah, a lot, a lot of things to keep bumping in front of that one as as a priority. And why even have it if it's just going to get moved that, you know, further in the future? Maybe I'm to another term.
So absolutely fair discussion. That's why we have a motion action list. You know, I can report on that one that this really is a function of staff capacity without the municipal energy manager position, which has been vacant since spring of last year. We haven't really had the the municipal, you know, sort of in-house move to put behind it. And we have submitted some, you know, spring of last year, we had submitted some information to Alberta Municipalities and Municipal Climate Change Action Center. We are in the queue with other municipalities that are also looking for the same level of support. So I think there's those two factors there, the the partner that we're working with. They've got a lot of people that want to do the same thing, so they can provide sort of that's a quick turnaround. And we haven't had the staff capacity to have somebody on their case to get it back. I I'd like to take another swing at it to attempt to bring it back for April. I think at that time, if council, you know, felt that there wasn't, you know, you know, the need to progress, then council would choose to take off the the list and say, okay, well, maybe that's not even come back out in the future. But administration would like to have one more opportunity. And if it if it doesn't materialize, then certainly that's why I have a motion action list, council say, forget it. There's other things since folks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kelly, we had the motion on the table. I'll call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed. That motion carries. And we're at agenda item nine, council upcoming meetings, that means to boards and committees. Any updates, anyone? Counselor Axey.
This isn't so much upcoming, but I wanted to commend the operations department and other municipal staff for this very successful hosting of Netma last Wednesday evening. It was extremely well attended and it was heartwarming to listen to Director Greatham show with pride various elements of the department and some equipment they had and success as they've added. I I just wanted to take that opportunity to express appreciation.
Okay, if there's nothing further, move on to upcoming events, agenda item 10. This Thursday and Friday, council and administration directors have strategic priorities review. That's Thursday, the 29th and March 1st. Levedu, Trappo, Franco, Elbert, ten. Actually, not sure what that is, but at 10:45 on March 8th, at Hicle Jasper Elementary School. Anybody fill us in on that one? Lag raising. Okay, well, so I could read it, but I can't understand it. There you go. Lag raising. Jasper National Park Annual Public Forum is six to eight on March 12th, Jasper Activity Center. And the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce General Meeting is March 13th at Fairmont Jasper Lodge. There's no time on that one. Time, anybody wrong with breakfast meeting? We're looking to them. And then agenda item 11, adjournment. Would I have a motion to adjourn? Councilor Hall, all in favor? They're not opposed. Thank you. Thank you for tuning in for to see you guys in the coming weeks.